Hey, we're going to reconvene to open session, a regular meeting, Albany Unified School, District Board of Education for November 13th, 2018. We have a roll call, please.
President Black.
Here.
Vice President Stapleton Gray.
Here.
Board Member Blanchard.
Here.
Board Member Clark.
Here.
Board Member Trutain.
Here.
Student Board Member Weinstein.
Here.
Student Board Member Mala.
Here.
Thank you. For those who wish to participate, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the mission and vision statement.
The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens.
AUSD is committed to creating a comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
Thank you. The board took no action and closed session. First item is approval of the agenda. Does anyone want any changes to the agenda? Jacob?
Yeah, I'm requesting that we table review on Action 4C, which is related to the board evaluation instrument or whatever, considering we have a large crowd of folks here. And we have 30 minutes budgeted for that and 45 minutes budgeted for the Budget Advisory Committee. I don't see that being nearly close to two-thirds as important as what we're going to talk about tonight. And also, if it's going to be an instrument to evaluate the board, three-fifths of our new board is not here, and I think they should have a say in it.
Yeah, I would second that.
Yeah, I'd second that, too.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, with that change, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have the consent calendar. Does anyone have any items on the consent calendar they want to comment on or pull from the calendar? Kim?
I wanted to comment on the personnel assignment order. It appears to me that Peter Facilius has become lead custodian, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Pete because he has been at Cornell for so long, and he's done such an incredible job there. I mean, I'm sure that everybody else on the PAO is also very deserving, but that really jumped out at me when I looked at this list. I just want to give thanks for Pete and for the rest of our custodial staff. They do a lot for us.
Thanks. Okay, anything else on the consent calendar? All right, can we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Will we approve the consent calendar?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board and superintendent reports.
Thank you, President Black, members of the board, student board members. First of all, I'd like to say that our hearts go out to those impacted in the campfire near Chico. And I know there's also a very large fire down in Southern California, but I think there are quite a few people in this area who probably have family members, friends, or people that they know who have lost everything. And so I just really wanted to say that our hearts go out to those that were impacted. There is a special board meeting on Thursday from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and this is the special board meeting will be held at Ocean View Multipurpose Room on temporary housing for elementary students. So that has been posted, but I wanted to just mention that. And finally, the documentary Near Normal Man is going to be presented on Friday from, let me make sure I get this time right, 6:00 to 7:30. This is a joint effort by the City of Albany, Albany Unified, and UC Village. Charlene Stern is the daughter of Ben Stern, who was a Holocaust survivor, and she will be showing the documentary. She's the producer and director, and she will also be holding a Q&amp;A afterwards. There will be children's activities, there will be pizza. And I was asked by the members of the Student Equity Advisory Council if we could send that out as well to all of the high school students. My understanding is that not every high school student can hear the daily announcements, and so we'll try and get that out tomorrow. Thank you, and that's my report.
Thanks. Anyone else? Charlie?
So I wanted to pick up on your comments about the air quality and fires. And I think it's been a vivid demonstration to all of us what the significance of air pollution actually is. Most of the time, it's invisible. We don't see it. We don't notice it's there. I think pretty much everybody has noticed the air quality in the Bay Area recently because of the fires. And what I want us to remember is that we're noticing it because it's everywhere. If you live in a house next to a freeway, you're probably experiencing those kind of air pollution levels. It's just the rest of us don't notice it because we're not living in a house next to the freeway. So I think we should remember that as we consider where we're building our new school buildings. Let's think about that carefully in terms of the placement of buildings so that we don't necessarily have kids on playgrounds next to busy streets or in buildings built next to busy streets.
Thanks, Charlie. Anyone else? Jacob?
Yeah, I just want to mention a few things I did over the last couple of weeks. The first one, I had the pleasure of going to the Albany High School football game, homecoming, and saw Board Member Trutain there. And hadn't been to a football game since I was in high school at Albany High. And it was just a great atmosphere. It was so nice to see so many parents and grandparents and brothers and sisters. It was just a great time. So I wanted to congratulate the football team for a very successful season. And then also, I wanted to thank all the parent volunteers who were setting up for the Albany Middle School haunted house. I stopped by and helped out for a little while, and it was just great to see everybody chipping in for the kids. So that was very fun as well. And yesterday, I had the pleasure to visit the Albany Children's Center, and Anna Mansker walked me around to some of the classrooms, and I got to read the Hungry Caterpillar to the students and sing some songs with them. And it was just a really, really great time. And wanted to give a big shout out to the whole staff up there, and thank you for inviting me.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, how about the student board member report?
So at Albany High School, students attended the career fair last Wednesday and learned about the lifestyles of teachers, chefs, and many other professionals. And Albany High School Football Team also participated in playoffs. At Albany Middle School last Tuesday, the Black Parent Engagement Committee met in the AMS Library, and the middle school dance was held on November 2nd for 7th and 8th graders, while 6th graders enjoyed a Halloween party.
At Marin, a PTA committee meeting will be held at 6:30 in the multipurpose room. At Cornell, students, faculty members, and parents will be at Community Time at 8:30 on the playground. On November 16th, students will come to school wearing their favorite comic book or superhero characters for their spirit day. And at Ocean View this Thursday, the Ocean View PTA will hold a meeting at 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments for the students? Good, then we'll move on. We have persons to address the board on matters not on the agenda. This is only matters that
Hi, my name is Marsha Skinner. I want to make it clear that my comments are my own and not reflective of any organization that I come before you representing periodically. I want to thank Ross and Charlie for their service, having sat in their chairs. I know that the meetings here you see are just the tip of the iceberg, and, you know, I don't know if it's 10% of the time you spend or what, but I want to thank them both for their service. I want to express to the community that I'm concerned about the election results. I believe that this creates a leadership vacuum. Charlie is the one person I know has been studying this budget for the last 20 years. You might see removal of sitting board members for malfeasance, and that's not the case here. We have a situation where people have concerns about ethnic balance and other things, but I think we're going into a season where we know we need deep cuts, and we're losing some very important budget expertise here. It means that Jacob and Kim are going to have to really step up, maybe sooner and maybe more than they had intended to. But I am concerned as we go forward into the cut season here.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment? Matters not on the agenda. Okay, seeing none. We have our first staff report, California School Dashboard Local Indicators.
Thank you, President Black. I'm going to turn this over to Marie Williams, who's our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, who will talk about this item. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, Superintendent Williams, Board President Black, Board Members, Community. The purpose of this item is to report on our local indicators as a requirement of the California School Dashboard. Last year was the first year that we were required to measure at the local level indicators for which the state does not have information. So this is our second year of making this report. I wanted to start with this slide that you see a lot when we're talking about the Local Control and Accountability Plan. These are the state's LCAP priorities. We are responsible for 1 through 8. We're not responsible for 9 or 10. Those are for county offices of education only. But you'll see basic services, implementing standards, course access. Those are direct repeats then when we look at the local indicators of areas for us to look at, in addition to parent involvement and pupil engagement. This slide shows the six state indicators for which information is collected. The dashboard for California schools will be updated in December, and so we will have updated information about college and career readiness, graduation rates, English lunar progress, performance on state standards, chronic absenteeism, and also suspension rates. But you'll see on the right side, the five local indicators are the areas that we measure at the local level, at the site and district level. And so those are having to do with basic conditions, which is basically Williams compliance, so making sure that teachers are appropriately credentialed for the assignments that they hold in the classroom, and also that students have sufficient instructional materials. Implementation of academic standards is another area, parent engagement, climate. And then a new indicator for us this year is access to a broad course of study, which is speaking to opportunities to enroll in a broad course of study that we'll talk about in just a little bit. So I want to talk a little bit about this slide again, because last year, in our first year of measuring our performance on the local indicators, and then again this year, I had a question about how districts meet or do not meet the standard. So in this case and for these purposes, meeting the standard requires that districts do three things. It requires that we measure our progress. It requires that we report those results at a board meeting, as I am doing right now, and it requires that we upload our information to the California School Dashboard. This year, our deadline is November 16th by 5:00 p.m., and that is a hard deadline. There are not requirements in terms of either the quality of the results or the quality of the report that make any difference in terms of whether or not we meet the standard for the state's purposes. Certainly, I think when we look at some of the information, we see that there are areas for us to grow and improve in, and then those improvements, we would hope, would show up in our Local Control and Accountability Plan or in other planning. But for the purposes of this report, because we have measured our progress, because I am reporting it to you today, and because I'm going to upload it to the website tomorrow, we will have met all of the five standards. And I know that that was tricky, because typically when we think about meeting standards, we think about maybe hitting a specific target or reaching a certain goal. But if you remember, sort of the emphasis of our new accountability system is growth, and so we are measuring our own growth over time rather than trying to meet a standard that's been set by the So there are five indicators. I'll go through these pretty quickly. The first, again, is around basically Williams compliance, so appropriately assigned teachers. The second, around academic standards. The third, parent engagement. And this year, we have measured parent engagement in a couple different ways in order to sort of solicit a full range of input from as many parents as possible. And then the last two are school climate, which we measure by administering the California Healthy Kids Survey. And then access to a broad course of study was brand new for us this year, so we measured it in the way that we thought was appropriate. But, you know, when I looked at what other districts were doing to report for as many districts as I looked at, there were that many different ways to measure it. So this will be one that in future years, we will want to maybe sort of hone the focus or decide what our priorities are in this area to be more focused. But we have measured it this year. Okay, so for indicator one, which is appropriately assigned teachers, you'll see that we have met the standard. In terms of the numbers of misassignments or vacant positions, I did work with Human Resources to gather this information and was informed by Ms. Cotton that misassignments can include not having CLAD certification, which is an acronym that stands for something that I don't remember right now, and I know that we don't appreciate acronyms. But it's not just that you don't have the appropriate credential. It could be other certification requirements that are at play also. As you know, because we certified our instructional materials in October, all of our students have access to instructional materials for use at school and at home, and that does not mean having two sets of instructional materials. That means having instructional materials sufficient for each student to be able to use them at school and at home. And then instances where facilities do not meet the good repair standard, we have zero. And I know that we are building new schools, and so we would say that we have schools that are not in good repair, but in terms of meeting the criteria for this, we have zero. So we have met the standard for this indicator. The second indicator is having to do with implementation of state academic standards, and so I'll go to the survey. So the survey asks a number of questions, having to do with implementing standards in a number of areas. And what we know is that in terms of English Language Arts and Mathematics, we are at full implementation at the elementary level. Last year, we adopted units of study in reading, and previously had adopted units of study in writing, and both at the secondary and elementary level had adopted instructional materials for mathematics. Last year, we adopted also, at the high school, a series of novels for English. So we believe we have fully implemented in that area, in the areas of English Language Arts and Math. We know that in general, for next-generation science standards at the K-5 level, we do have work to do. We have an adoption that we need to take care of. But because our elementary teachers worked so hard last year in implementing units of study in reading, they asked that we take a year off from piloting, so we are doing that. But we'll prepare to pick that up again next year. And also are continuing our work in English language development and are working with our specialists to look at some potential instructional materials that might support students in their classes. History/Social Science is on our list also of materials that will need to be adopted pretty soon here, because we do have a new framework, although the standards have not changed. And so that's why you see for History/Social Science, beginning development, that's not related to the instruction in the classroom, but more our system being able to provide the teachers with the necessary materials that they need to teach in the classroom for all of these content areas. We measure not just English Language Arts and Math, Science, but also Career Technical Education, Health, PE, Visual and Performing Arts, and Language Arts. And so you'll see that we have rated ourselves at full implementation there. There is a level of full implementation with sustainability, and I think, you know, in some of these areas, we have done a lot of work but can do more. And so we have rated ourselves at full implementation for those. And overall, we are saying that we have met the standard for implementing state academic standards, which is priority two. The next area is measuring parent engagement, and there are two pieces to this. One is seeking inputs from, seeking input from parents in decision-making, and then the second is promoting parental participation in programs. And in Albany, we're very fortunate to have very high levels of parent participation in many of our programs in the schools. I've listed just a few of them on the right side for you, and on the left have listed just a few of the bodies that parents are involved in district-level decision-making. We also this year administered the Parent Schools Survey. We administered it, yes, last year as part of, as part of the California Healthy Kids Survey Administration, and had some responses at the K-5 and 6, 8 level, but not at the high school. So we actually re-administered the survey in the fall of this year because we wanted to get input from high school also, and certainly can use those results to inform the development of our district's Local Control and Accountability Plan moving forward. So you'll see here are some of the questions that we asked. These are not all of them, but some of the questions that we asked parents, and you'll see that in general, their responses are very high in the positive. So schools allowing input and welcoming parents, schools actively seeking input of parents before making decisions, parents feeling welcome to participate in school, attending a class or school event, serving as a volunteer, attending a general school meeting, almost 100% for both elementary and high school, and then serving on school committees during the year. So we believe that we have met the standard for parent engagement, priority three. But we are awaiting the results of the updated survey that we administered, and certainly will look at that as we move forward in the year. The next is measuring school climate, and we do that through analyzing the results of our California Healthy Kids Survey. This was administered last year. You'll see here the number of students that responded to the survey. And again, we don't include all of the results. We just, for the purpose of the local indicators, they want us really to focus on connectedness and safety or perceptions of safety, which is what, those are the questions that we pulled out. From the last time this survey was administered in 1516 to last year, 1718, the way that the results came to us changed slightly in that in 1516, results for agreeing all of the time or agreeing strongly and agreeing yes sometime were clumped together, and then in 1718, those results were separated out. And so to avoid confusion, as we looked at this year's results, I just identified some questions for us to look at here. And again, you'll see that for the most part, the results are very high. When we ask students in grade five, do you feel close to people at school? Are you happy to be here? Do you feel like you're a part of the school? Do teachers treat you fairly? And do you feel safe? Those questions were asked at grade seven. You'll see that the results are very similar. Here are the results for grade nine. And then grade 11. And so what we do see is, with many of the survey results, as students transition from 7th grade and then go to 9th grade, we do sort of see a dip in the results there at grades nine and grades 11, and think that there might be a host of factors that contribute to that. But in general, the students feel connected, they feel safe, they feel welcome at school, and that's good. So here's the safety question. How safe do you feel? For grade five, it's almost 100%. It's in the high 90s, low 90s. Do you feel safe on your way to and from school? And then here are the results for students in grade seven, grade nine, and grade 11. For the purposes of this indicator, we are required, where possible, to disaggregate the data by subgroup. And so we have chosen this question, feeling safe or very safe at school. And so while we have many student groups that are represented in our schools, not all of them are large enough to meet the requirements for being able to be reported publicly. This is the same as why we don't report Sback results always for groups that are small, because we don't want those students to be identified potentially. So what you see here are the results for the groups that were reported to us and that we can share publicly. And so the question is about feeling safe or feeling very safe at school. And so then you'll see, again, that in general, the results are over 50% in all the categories, but there looks to be a drop-off in grade nine and grade 11. So we would say that we have met the standard for the purposes of this indicator. When we look at the results, we know that there's work to do in terms of helping all students feel safe at school, but for the purposes of our local indicator requirements, we have met the standard. Okay, this was the last one, and this is access to a broad course of study. And so you'll see what those courses of study are down below here for grades 1 through 6 and grades 7 through 12. I won't read those. And so then some of the ways this year that we are looking at the degree to which we provide access to a broad course of study. One is we highlight a lot of staffing in our Local Control and Accountability Plan, and wanted to highlight that. So teachers on special assignment, intervention specialists, ELD specialists, CTE teachers, AP teachers, teachers teaching visual and performing arts, teacher librarians and technicians, school counselors, physical education teachers. And so we wanted to call out and highlight that all of these folks, in addition to all of the outstanding classroom teachers, help us ensure that students have access to a broad course of study. And then on the right, you'll see that we looked at student enrollment and then also course enrollment. These don't represent individual, especially at the high school, don't represent, could represent students in more than one area or taking up more than one seat in a particular content area. But certainly, you'll see that we do offer a wide range of course offerings in the areas that are noted here. And so for this local indicator in our first year of reporting, we also would say that we have met the standard for providing access to a broad course of study. There are a couple other, I think, the bell schedule structured provides additional opportunities for students to access a broad course of study. And then when you look at our graduation rates, they are in the 90%, higher than 90%. So I think we have clearly met the standard for reporting And that's it. So if you have any questions or comments, now would be the time. Thank you.
Questions? Charlie?
So I wonder if you could just go back three slides, please? There it is, yeah. So this is the most disturbing slide in the packet, and I would hope that both district staff and Albany High School staff will devote some significant time and attention to what you see here, that drop between grade seven and grade nine. Something needs some attention there. You know, just to be a little bit optimistic about it, I see no reason why we shouldn't have everybody scoring 90% across the board.
First, I wanted to compliment you on this presentation. This is very, very clear and well-presented so that we could grasp a lot of information quickly. I really appreciate the effort you put into this. If you could go back to the last slide about indicator two, I think page 98. Yeah, there you go. Up on, at the top under four, can you just spend a minute talking about the CTE offerings? Because, you know, this is, this is kind of new for the district, and this has been a focus of concern for some time, and it's just barely mentioned here, but I think it's worth stating.
So there was a question. So there was a question about what we are offering in terms of course sequences that would help us meet the standard. And so this year, we are offering three course pathways with at least two years' worth of course offering. One is culinary arts as a first-year course, and then we're offering international cuisine as a second-year course. We're also offering journalism and advanced journalism, which are tagged as ROP courses, and also photography, advanced and beginning level, which are also tagged as ROP courses. I think in terms of sort of our work moving forward, we know that there is planned construction at the high school to expand our ability to provide career technical education course offerings to students. And so, you know, we will continue to move forward. The CTE grant, the California, the Career Technical Education Incentive Grant, as it was, ended, but new funds are available. And so we will be applying for those funds and hope to continue to grow our programs in CTE. You know, I think the other thing to say is that we provide a tremendous amount of CTE for as small a school as the high school is. And so I think it's a testament to the engagement of the programs and the dedication of the staff and the interest of the students that we can offer as many CTE courses as we can in a school that has 1,200 students. That, that's hard.
Thank you.
Others? Anyone, the audience want to comment on this item? Okay, well, thank you for all your work on this. And we'll move on. We have a special education update.
Thank you, President Black trustees. I'm going to turn this over to our Director of Special Education, Diane Marie, who's giving our monthly updates on special education. Ms. Diane Marie?
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to provide an overview of the caseloads because I was asked to do so. And starting with the special day class, well, first of all, each different color represents a position or a program. So there were some questions, and you'll see on-
Diane, could you talk into the microphone?
I sure can. You can see on, under resource, the second one down, it says Cornell, then it says inclusion. So I'll get to that. But each color separates or outlines, so it might be a little confusing. The special day class, that represents our teachers, and the, of note is the Cornell Middle School split. That is one teacher who splits her time between Cornell and the middle school. And her program is more inclusionary. It's supporting kids with moderate to severe disabilities who are mostly in the general education. So she's working with the teachers. She does do some direct instruction, but that is why she's split for about an hour and a half in the morning at Cornell. Then she moves on to the middle school. The special day class teachers work with students, and they're credentialed to work with teachers with moderate to severe disabilities. The resource specialists are credentialed to work with students with mild to moderate disabilities. And the teacher who case manages four students, that is a teacher who has a job, well, kind of three parts to her job. 50% of her job is devoted to case managing those students and to providing direct instruction to those students, but also to some other students at Cornell. The other 50%, she provides all of the initial assessments at our elementary sites. And the, as you can see, we have one full-time resource specialist at each of our elementaries. The middle school has three full-time resource specialists, and the high school has four. We have a total of 84 students at, well, we have a capacity to have 84 students at both of the, throughout our elementaries and at our middle school, because there are three teachers and their max caseload is 28. Currently, we have 55 elementary students receiving resource support, and we have 60 at the middle school. The high school, we have four teachers, so we can provide services for 112 students. Currently, we have 80. Our speech people, a full-time, school-age speech pathologist can have a caseload of 55 students. You'll see the lower numbers for the high school and the middle school because those teacher, those two speech pathologists are 80%. So they can case manage 44 students, so they can have 44 kids on their caseload. The first position, the elementary and preschool, that is one person, and about 11% of her job is providing speech to a special day class at Ocean View. And we have her there because it's a communication and another part, a communication class. And another part of her job is providing our AAC or all, Augmentative and Alternative Communication, working with the speech devices. So she, it made sense if she was providing that service to the class that she also be their speech pathologist. And then the rest of her day, she provides preschool speech services. And a preschool speech teacher can provide a maximum caseload of 40. So about 50% of her time is working with the preschool population, which is why the max caseload is 20 for her. Occupational therapists, we have two of them. One has 48 and the other has 40. Typically, they run 50, 55 students. And some of the students are consult, and that's more typical in the middle and the high school, where they're, the occupational therapist consult with the teachers, the special education teachers, and the general education teachers to talk about ways to accommodate the needs of the students. And then we have one adapted phys ed teacher, and she provides adapted phys ed for students throughout the district. And she currently has 22 students with whom she works. I also was asked about 504 assessments. And from what I could gather, last year, we had a total of seven throughout the district, two at the middle and five at the high school. And just as an informational, so far as of today, we've had 40 referrals for assessment. And that's specialized, not by what we're-
Jacob?
Yeah, I want to thank you for providing the report. I just have a quick question as far as, under the resource specialist.
Yes.
If you look at AMS 1, 2, and 3.
Yes.
One has AMS, two has 26, AMS 3 has 16. Is that just because of different needs? Or?
Well, it is. One thing that determines that is that AMS, they work really hard to have each teacher take one grade load or grade level.
Okay.
So the highest grade level, I believe, is eighth grade.
So that's why we see the difference?
Yeah, that's, that's where the difference. And at the high school, the way we determine the caseload is, I do a big spreadsheet with each child and then like resource math, resource English, all the different resource courses and the labs, and then put who their teacher is. And their lab teacher typically is their case manager. Some kids, it's super easy because they only have like one lab, and so you don't have choice.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I ask a question?
No, you need to come, I'm sorry, you need to come up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Thies, and I'm here as a parent and also a parent advocate at the Disability Rights Education and Defense Fund. I have other comments tonight about the budget. But for now, my question for you, Ms. Marie, is where are the behaviorists and the mental health clinicians on this list? Because I know, were you just doing, looked like you were focusing on credentialed teachers, but I know that there's more, a lot more support you wrap in.
We have a behavior analyst and a behaviorist who are district-wide employees, and they support students wherever they happen to be. We have school psychologists, and each of our school psychologists carry a caseload of kids that they actually provide counseling service to. And it's approximately five students. We could go, I think, as high as six or seven, but I believe they're all in the four to five. And then one of our school psychologists, 80% of that position is providing mental health support to the kids.
Hello, Mr. Ritchie, special education teacher, Albany Middle School. Thank you very much, Ms. Marie, for providing that detailed report. I do wanted to take a look at the numbers there. And talking to my colleagues, not only at the middle school, but also the high school, because we're closely co-located versus the three elementaries, which are harder to reach for myself, I wanted to see where the initials were placed in those numbers. Because I heard, was it 40, you said, initial assessments? So out of that 40, where are those? And how does that impact these numbers? Because they are work. They are considered basically like triennials, which every three years, we need to do extensive testing to see if the student still qualifies for special education. And that's pretty much what happens with an initial, is it goes through a battery of tests, just like a triennial. So my concern is, when I talk to my colleagues, and we share our caseloads, the numbers aren't looking like that because the initials aren't tagged on to those. Can you please inform us where those initials are, so we can really get a sense of the true workload besides just caseload? Thanks.
At the elementary, it makes no difference because there's one person who does the initials for all the elementaries. And that is the the one that says Cornell Inclusion. The other 50% of her position is doing all the initials for the elementary, excuse me. At the middle school, one of the resource specialists is, has a 20% teaching, is devoted toward doing assessments. And so the special education teachers teach four classes. So this individual teaches three classes, and then one period is devoted to performing the initial assessments. And then they also have a fifth period, which is devoted toward case management. And that's the same for the high school. They have four teachers, one of whom does 20% of the job is doing initial assessments. And then they each teach, you know, she teaches three classes, does the initials, and then has her class to do the IEP prep. And those numbers don't fall on the caseload because students do not become on someone's caseload until such time that they're eligible. And that's where the case management then comes in with guiding their academic program and the supports that they receive in order to access and make progress in the general curriculum. And as far as the assessments, at the middle school this year, there have been two assessments. There were a handful left over from last year. And the high school this year has had three assessments. Elementaries had 16. And it's, I mean, it's luck of the draw. Sometimes you might have one or two. Sometimes you have lots.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Michelle Yostine. I'm a counselor at the high school. And I just had a question. Can you move this slide up? Can I do it? Just about the 504 assessments. That's not our caseload though, so I just want clarification in terms of what the caseload numbers actually are for 504s? Because that's just assessments that were done, correct? So do we have those numbers broken down? Okay.
Hi there. Eric Castillo McIntyre. I'm the father of India McIntyre, a special education student at Ocean View. And we actually, she has been the happy recipient of many of the really good services that the special education program provides, especially OT. And I can tell you, it's high quality because my wife is, is an OT, and she's the Assistant Chief Therapist in Alameda County. So she knows one when she sees one. And especially, we have a very good adaptive PE teacher who goes way above and beyond Nancy, her last name escapes me right now. Now, Anderson, yes, Anderson. Now, my question is, I don't see any information about physical therapists. And there has been great turnover for PTs. And I would like to understand why that is, especially because in our particular case, we have had to look for PT services outside of the school district because they are not provided on a consistent basis at the school district. So.
Okay, quick response to all three. The 504 assessments were in this report only because I was asked how many we have, because it was said that they impact, and they do impact those people who had to do those. It did impact their job. But this was not a report on the, the numbers for our 504. As far as OTs and APE being quality providers, they are. Albany is very lucky to have an excellent special ed team all around. Our teachers, all of our related service providers. As far as PT and teacher of the visually impaired and orientation and mobility, our need is so very small that we, we have to contract for those services. And I know that the last, last year, we had a very hard time finding physical therapy. And, you know, when you have about three hours a week is your need, or two and a half hours a week, people aren't jumping to get it. And we've had a very difficult time finding agencies to provide it. This year, we were lucky. We had, we've had service since the beginning of the year. Last year, it was probably maybe October before we actually found someone to, who would come and do our physical therapy for us. And then she left because she was split between several of the districts in the SLPA, and then she went with one of them.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Olga Miranda. I am the mother of Joaquin Rubio, who's a recipient of special ed support. And I, my concern, as somebody who also goes over budgets, my concern of there not being any mention here specifically, leaves me to believe that they're either getting rid of it, or that service, right? Or that the teachers or already special ed support at the schools is already overwhelmed, that they're going to be taking the brunt of that additional work. And that's my concern as a parent. Right now, everyone who's in special ed, whether it's the elementaries, the middle schools, and the high school, and the only reason I know this is because of the parents I get to interact with, whose children are also in need of certain services, specific services, that even in the general ed classrooms, those teachers are struggling to be able to report back, be able to have a triennial. My son just had his own triennial. So I just want to make sure that, that the services that were left out are included in this because it's, it's absolutely important for me and any parent in the district, the transparency of it all, right? We want to be able to see the numbers. How will our children be impacted by that? And it's absolutely important that if it's not mentioned, then it leads me to believe it's either going somewhere or going away. And that's not exactly what we're fighting for, and that we want to be able to keep. Thank you.
I'm not sure exactly which services, unless we were talking behaviorists perhaps, because they're not on there. But the people who are on there are people who carry a caseload. Our behaviorists work district-wide, and they don't have very many kids who actually get direct service. They just support the entire district, which is why they're not on there.
Okay, I know you're all here to talk about budget. So can we move on to that? Or does anybody have an urgent need to talk on this issue first? Okay, then let's move on and have our Budget Advisory Committee report.
Thank you, President Black trustees and members of the audience. So the purpose of this item tonight is for the board to receive- So the purpose of this item tonight is for the board to receive the Budget Advisory Committee's report and then to provide direction to staff. So just by way of some quick background information, on June 13th, 2017, staff reported to the Board of Trustees that the district was facing an annual budget deficit. A town hall meeting was held on October 21st, 2017, partially to raise public awareness but also solicit some input. And we also convened a budget work group. And that group met a few times in 2017-18. This group did not present any formal recommendations to the board. So on December 5th, 2017, the board asked staff to organize a Budget Advisory Committee that is board-appointed. And so we went through the process. The committee was approved on August 14th. We did use the MADDY Act and post the positions. And we then convened the Budget Advisory Committee. So the Budget Advisory Committee is made up of a member of the Albany Teachers Association, site administrator, elementary parent, secondary parent, California School Employees Association member, and a service employees international union, SEIU representative. The members are Stephen Naif, who is representing teachers, Darren McNallys is the site administrator, Ben Wallace, and An Joseph Vu are sharing the elementary parent. And I believe that's because the board had approved to have two members that had one vote. Jessica Cross was our secondary parent. Morgan Pasky was our parent educator. And Richard Betts, as a custodian, was invited. And he was not able to attend any of the meetings. So the members held, which was originally going to be four meetings, we ended up meeting six times from September all the way through November 7th. And the Budget Advisory Committee did present to the board a narrative as well as three tables in the Budget Advisory Committee report. There is an Appendix A and an Appendix B. An Appendix A is the potential scenarios for budget reductions. Appendix B was the budget worksheet, budget cut worksheet that the committee used. Appendix C, which we do have copies at the back of the room. Appendix C is a breakdown of the, excuse me, are you? There we go, okay. Appendix C are the different plans, health and welfare benefit plans and different scenarios. And Appendix D was a comparison on health and welfare benefits and salary for districts in the surrounding area. So the Budget Advisory Committee looked at a lot of data the first few meetings. There was public comment. I did make sure that anything that was emailed to me was given to the Budget Advisory Committee. We also had a link to the website where the, or the public could provide information or questions or feedback, and that was also turned over to the Budget Advisory Committee. And I'm looking at, there's a lot of people, and I see a couple of, few members of the Budget Advisory Committee, okay, they're here. And so I've asked them to, to come if they were able to answer any questions or provide additional information to this board. So at this time, I'd like to ask the members of the Budget Advisory Committee if you could come up to the, to the dais in order to provide any additional information you would like and then to respond to questions from the board.
Hi, I'm Jessica Cross. I was the secondary parent representative on the committee.
Morgan Pasky, I'm a parent educator for Albany Middle School.
And Stephen Naif, as the teacher representative.
So maybe we'll just, yeah. Do you want to start, Morgan, or would you like to continue?
Sure. So this is our conclusions, limitations, and concerns. The committee was struck by the sheer magnitude of the cuts required relative to the district's budget. After spending time with the numbers and asking for and receiving additional information, it became clear that there is no path to achieving the necessary reduction that completely avoids damage to the student's educational experience or cuts to staff and impacts morale. The committee further recognized that these are intertwined. The amount of low-impact expenditures in the budget is insufficient to implement the reduction that low-impact cuts alone. This is simply, there is simply no way Albany Unified School District can do what has been done, what has been doing, or be quite the school district it has been with this much less money. The task then is for the board to cut in such a way as to minimize negative consequences with the understanding that avoiding them altogether is not possible. The committee urges all stakeholders, parents, students, teachers, administrators, and other staff of all kinds to recognize this and to bear in mind that any expenditures, expenditure that is kept in the budget must be paid for elsewhere.
In its time together, the committee was not able to identify cuts to fill the first $2.5 million reduction goal. And I will mention that our time together was, I think, quite, quite short. I think we all felt it wasn't quite what we would have needed to, to complete that work. And one of the biggest limitations was that time. We had to get through a lot of time of review and explanation of the situation, and that ate up a fair amount of our time. So one result of that was that some ideas that arose couldn't be fully pursued. And another was that the ranking of items that we did began so late in the process that there was not any time for members to go back over their initial votes for consistency or to sort of do a second round ranking items within categories against each other, which might have provided the board with more information. And another limitation stemmed from the fact that we sort of necessarily had to rely on district staff to produce a relatively limited universe of cuts. So we were working from a table that was, that was presented. And we did have the opportunity to, to raise questions, but those pretty rarely led to another number on, on the list. A couple of line items are on there, but the ones that came in from outside generally were left as unknown amount of money. And in some cases, we were sort of voting on things we didn't necessarily understand all of the components of how it would work in practice, although we tried. And we, we received extensive and detailed potential cuts and their estimated value, but we weren't able to really produce detailed scenarios for the board to consider against each other. Stephen, do you want to?
Sure. So that was the other very important thing, just to finish up, the final recommendation, then we'll answer any questions if we can. So the committee recommends that the board think broadly and creatively about ways to make cuts easier for students and staff to bear. Further, the board, staff, and community should actively pursue any potential revenue solutions to minimize need for cuts. These might include new parcel taxes, increased fund pooling around among PTAs, plans to increase facility rental revenues, increases in transfer students, among other possibilities. Above all, the committee recommends that the board refer back to the principles identified by this committee as a guidepost for those, for their decisions. These are, one, minimize impact on educational quality for all students. Two, consider the ability to restore a given reduction before cutting it. And lastly, spread reductions widely, favoring small reductions for a greater number of stakeholders over larger reductions for a few.
So before we open this up to, to the board for questions, I want to thank publicly and personally the Budget Advisory Committee. This was really hard. And I think even the words when I say this was really hard doesn't capture the amount of time and energy and review and, and examination to look at potential budget cuts and to, to bring this report to the board. So I really want to thank the Budget Advisory Committee. I don't think we really did have enough time to vet everything, but what they did in six meetings is very commendable. And I really want to thank the committee for all of your work and, and your efforts. Thank you.
Board comments? Charlie?
Surprise. So thank you. This is a fabulous report. I know how hard you guys worked. I attended four of the six meetings. You put in a lot of time and you gave us a way to think about this thoughtfully. The criteria that Stephen just read, those are excellent criteria, and I wanted to endorse them myself. You've given us kind of a split into Table 1, first round, Table 2, well, let's work on this more, and then Table 3, don't do this, please, which is great. And you've given us the analysis that I think the board is going to need in order to approach this thoughtfully. You've given us the pros and cons, the consequences. So everything is here. I would like to make a proposal. You've said it here tonight. It's said in the report that you could have used more time. I think we should give them more time. We don't actually have to make $2.5 million worth of proposed cuts by first interim. We have to do it sometime this year. You know, we've got first interim, we've got second interim, we've got third interim if we need it. We have time to go through this thoughtfully. And I would love to see us kind of focus on Table 1, what you said was the first round. And I'd like to actually extend the tenure of the committee so that they could continue to do analysis and provide more information on those areas that they felt they could have used more time to, to look into, to help us get through Table 2 at a later date to help us uncover what hasn't been uncovered, perhaps because you didn't have enough time. So I would propose that that's an action we could actually take tonight, which is to extend the tenure of the committee. That's probably maybe not something you actually wanted us to ask you. But if you could, I think it would be very beneficial to the board to have your ongoing work continue.
Yes, please.
So, I mean, we're here to, to help out any way we can. I can speak for myself and probably others. I think one of the main problems that we had was really understanding what the constraints are and especially the fact that we've not talked about any way of increasing revenue and really understanding what other cuts are there. And I think that's where we need help from, you know, teachers, community members, everybody to get even more information before that continues.
Can I just add in response?
Yeah, please do.
One of the things that was sort of outside of our scope, if, if people are wondering about this, was soliciting input and bringing it back. That was not part of our mission on this particular committee. So just, just for clarity about that. But there were times where I would have liked to, to do that. And I felt like I could have gotten, you know, people's opinions but also just more information about what other people thought these things would mean. Something complicated like a six-period day at the high school, for example, which doesn't mean a six-period bell schedule but means budgeting for six periods. And so somehow, cutting FTE to fit with that budget. Well, what FTE? What programs? You know, to find that sort of thing out because it's very difficult to weigh in on something when you don't know. So I, I would say having that time to do that would be really useful.
I'd like to just comment on that a second then, Jacob. I don't know who said that wasn't part of your, your mission. The reason that there were people on this committee from all the different stakeholders was because it was at least my understanding that the board wanted you to talk to all the people in your cohort and find out what their opinions were. So if you didn't have time to do that, I can understand that. If you thought that wasn't part of your charge, then I doubly like to second what Charlie said and give you more time to do that.
Well, I was basing on that, I asked if we should be, in the first meeting, if we should be going out to PTA meetings or doing anything like that. And I, I thought maybe I misunderstood that the answer was no. I did talk to people that I know, but I did feel that because we talked about, oh, well, there was the survey, there was the town hall, there were these other things in the past. So my understanding was that was the point where we were like soliciting input in that kind of formal way. And yes, of course, I talked to people that I know, but I thought we weren't doing that in part of this like very short period of time. But maybe I misunderstood, but it was what, what other people thought was.
Well, my experience was, in my first time doing anything like this, that I couldn't talk to anybody, and I literally did not speak to anybody. No one on the board and no one in my group because I thought the Brown Act didn't allow me to do that. And I had to be quiet and not ask questions and not discuss the meeting. So I, I found it very, a very frustrating experience. And I think I said, you know, poor Superintendent Williams, I mean, she just had a really hard time because my last night there, we were there five, six hours, I was exhausted. And my comment was, the Brown Act is kicking my butt. I'm tired of not being able to speak, especially about trying to come up with revenue ideas because that's, that is the way we feel we need to go.
Okay, well, the Brown Act restricts what you can discuss with each other outside of a meeting, but they were open-agendized meetings and anybody could come to them. But the Brown Act no way restricts what you can say to anybody who's not on the committee.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, one more quick comment. And then the other thing is, you know, I know a lot of teachers, but I certainly cannot possibly represent all the intricacies of middle school and high school and, and other two elementaries, so.
Of course.
That's a part too.
Yeah, but, but we really are interested in getting as much input as possible. Jacob?
Yeah, if you could please scroll up a little bit, just a little bit. Yeah, that's, that's, that's great. I'm very happy to hear Charlie and Paul say that maybe we need to slow down and give them a little bit more time. If you look at the first one, it says October 10th, when we put together the first Budget Assessment Committee, and it was just a complete mess, wasted my time, a lot of other people's time. So as time moved on, December 5th, a concerned parent brought it up that maybe we should have a board-appointed one, and we progressed. And then it didn't really get to work till August 14th, no fault of the budget committee. I think it was a lack of leadership and I was concerned that we were going to drag this out and then all of a sudden, a couple of things are going to be thrown us, thrown at us all at the last second, and it was going to be jammed through. And I'm very happy to hear that two other board members think we need to slow down and let the budget committee do some more work and hear some more input from all the stakeholders involved. So I don't know, I want to give everybody else a chance to speak, but I guess I'm thirting with what Mr. Blanchard and Mr. Black has stated.
Thanks, Russ.
Yeah, so something you said, Ms. Pasky, worries me a bit in how all of this is being perceived. You said the board must cut, you know, say wisely or away from this, et cetera. The board does not do any of this. The administration brings forth the budget and the, and the board approves it. Our role as a board could absolutely be to, to sort of shine the spotlight of, hey, don't lose sight of this. But if, if Stephen can't speak for teacher, for all teachers, we have one serving classroom teacher, we've, one or two of us have taught. We do not have construction experts on this board. That's absolutely going to play in all of this. The board's role is to approve a budget and it's the administration's job to bring the budget forward. So I'd say that's going to happen for, for, for good or ill, based on a lot of inputs, including from your group, including from the people who talk to you because you're in that group. And absolutely, if the board, if the advisory group meets again, seek ideas from anybody and everybody, and they can be across the spectrum of things. I, personally, from the time I've served on this board, revenue is a tough problem. Things that, taxes go on a, on a ballot pretty much only every year at best, or maybe every two. The one big thing that jumped out at me, and I, I think I helped get discussed by the committee, was the issue of addressing construction versus classroom teachers, say. We don't have to knock down schools that are not yet falling down and may or may not in any earthquake. We absolutely spend money every year out of the general fund for portables. And the numbers I saw on, on the cost of new portables, the cost of renting portables seemed pretty high. So I would love to know how much we're actually spending on an annual basis on portables. But if we can make that swap, that may be something that the community might welcome. They, they spoke at how they were stretched to pay for construction. Well, I don't think we can go out with a parcel tax then if, if we've hit that limit.
Yeah, I, you were the cause of that being in there. I brought it up after we had an exchange. I brought it up after we had an exchange, and actually Charlie brought it up separately earlier. But I wasn't in the time there, we weren't able to get, I think, because of short time, what the numbers were. And so that's one of the things I was alluding to, the idea came up, but it's still sitting there without a price tag, and that would be the kind of thing we'd like to look into, because I agree, I think this is this idea of replacing all leased portables in the whole district with purchased portables purchased with bond funding, and if necessary, reducing the scope of some of the bond construction projects to pay for it, because purchasing them wouldn't come out of the general fund and thereby reducing the, and so that was an idea we'd like to see, but we just, you know, like, I brought it up, and, you know, I think district staff certainly came back with what they could, but didn't have time to give it a number. But, yeah, I mean, I think we all would like to see solutions like that, where it doesn't result in programs getting cut for kids and things like that.
Okay, any other comments from the board before we open to the audience?
Wait a minute. You asked for comments from the board.
Well, we met for, well, I say we, as a committee, we met for about 18, 19 hours. Well, we had eight, but then we had those two extra five-hour meetings, plus at least one of the other meetings ran over. So 18, 19 hours in meeting. I know I wrote the initial draft of the report, I probably spent about another, oh, 12, 14 hours on that, and then, you know, talking to people, yeah. But that was by myself rather than with the committee on the draft.
Okay, please, we have someone else from the board who wants to make a comment, and then we'll open it up to the audience. Kim?
Well, I just wanted to add my thanks for the hard and difficult work that was done. We do still need to submit a first interim budget, and so I wanted to kind of survey the board members about how we're going to proceed through this report. We have Tables 1, 2, and 3, and the only time we can do this work is in public session. And so, you know, are we going to take comments and then go back and look at each, at least each Table 1 item, one by one? Do people feel the need to do that, or how are we going to handle this?
Well, we can handle it any way the board wants to handle it. As Ross commented before, it's the administration that needs to come up with the budget, not the board. We don't need to go through the table and pick each item. We should give more general direction to this staff.
I would say that, yeah, I would say that in terms of direction, I think that the direction becomes more clear when you're talking, you know, sort of line by line, to me, anyway. Let me, let's see.
Charlie, and then Jacob.
So, in the interest of making it possible to do this before midnight, yeah, I appreciate wanting to drill down and focus on certain items. What I'd like the opportunity to do is to focus on Table 1 tonight, and I'd like the opportunity to pull some items out of Table 1. If we don't have board consensus on certain items, I'd like the opportunity to pull them out and then be able to give staff direction that when they prepare the first interim, we're okay with them moving forward with what's in Table 1, except for what we have pulled out. I'd also like the opportunity to speak about some of the items in Table 2. I have some thoughts to offer on those, but I think it's premature to actually even go into Table 2 on a line-by-line basis. I think we should, I really think we need to have more thought and attention devoted to what's in Table 2. It's in Table 2 for a reason. It's because the Budget Committee found such significant adverse impacts of what's in Table 2 that they didn't want to put it in Table 1. And it just needs more time for processing. So rather than going through everything line by line, if we could just say we're going to focus on Table 1 with the opportunity for the board to remove stuff from Table 1 as we identify, and then direct further work to the Budget Committee to, you know, to go ahead and work on Table 2 or anything else, that would be my suggestion.
I like Kim's idea and kind of agreeing with Charlie. If we were to go through every single thing tonight, we would be here for an awful long time. I also want to kind of stay with Morgan was talking about the Brown Act. You always feel that you are kind of stopped from what you can say, and this is where we should be discussing these things, in my opinion. So I want to back up Kim on the fact that I think that the board, all five of us, should go through so the public kind of has an idea on what we're thinking, opposed to, you know, a lot of times speculation leads to people thinking that we're withholding something or whatever, you know? And I think that this is our opportunity to let people know how we feel. And I 100% back Kim and Charlie, to an extent, as far as I don't want to go through every single one tonight.
Audrey?
I had a question. So for all the columns that the reduction, the amount reduced is unknown, if you had more time, would you be able to find these numbers?
We would hope so, the district staff is usually who is producing them, so the portable being probably of the unknown, like, one of the larger, possibly larger ticket items. We were waiting for information because we had an estimate from elsewhere about how much the district spends on leasing, but then we were told some of those wouldn't be eligible to be replaced in this way. So we just didn't, and we don't have a way on our own to get it, but I think district staff could certainly produce it for us if given more time, yeah. And then the other even smaller ones, like the thing about allowing students at the high school to opt out of the PE requirement if they're on a comp sport, which, that was an idea that came out of the First Budget Committee from a student representative. And so that was a thing, we just didn't have the research done, but yeah, I think it could be done. Okay, thank you.
Val?
So I do have the numbers for the portables. So the leased portable cost is $90,000. $20,000 of it is paid for out of developer fees, and the other $70,000 is general fund.
Charlie?
So I do need to ask about that, because I guess maybe we need to know how many portables we lease. I know in your presentation that you'll show Thursday night, you're identifying the cost per portable as $21,300 for leasing costs. So the $90,000 number suggests that we're only leasing four or five portables. And yet, in the budget, you know, we have a line item, it's Object Code 5600, and the dollar number associated with last year's rentals, leases, and repairs, so it's aggregated, it's more than just portals, rentals, leases, and repairs, is $573,000. So I can't square these two numbers up. Maybe we need to talk about that a little more right now. Like, if indeed we're only leasing four or five portables, then I understand the number, and the rest of the $573,000 must be repairs and not rentals.
So, right now, I see Marin, we have four portables, two for ACC. And Albany Middle School, we've got four portables. Ocean View, we have one portable. Cornell, we have three portables. And what I found out is that when we were presenting Ocean View Temporary Housing, and the number were really different for the portable leasing, the reason is, all these portables, we've been having them for so many years, more than 10 years, that the lease cost was really low back then. And when I get a new quote lately, it's really high. So I see that's the major difference there, and I also asked a question to our consultant, why is there any big differences? And that was the response, that the cost.
So if I got this correctly, I wrote down 14 total portables that we're leasing? The numbers you gave us were the leased portables, is that right?
I see 12. Four at Marin.
12. I see 12 as well.
Well, I, let me just do this. Four at Marin, two at ACC?
No, sorry. Four at Marin, but two of them is for ACC.
Okay, so that's not four at Marin and two at ACC. That's four at Marin, period.
Right, right.
Got it?
If this group's going to go forward, I would absolutely put out there the general question of, can construction bond funds be used to diminish the cost of the general fund? That could be portable purchase instead of rentals. That could be putting in solar in lieu of paying PG&E. That could be other things I don't know of, but I'd leave that as an open question and encourage anybody who's got ideas on that, and I'm sure there are folks out there, to throw those up. It is one of the areas where you can change what it costs us on a day-to-day basis to run out of the general fund, and that's what pays for teacher salaries.
And that's what I was wondering, is if we can take, and actually, as a committee, go out and start investigating other companies that make portables, and even try to come up with our own, you know, some plans out there. I don't know if we can do that. Are we allowed?
You can, I don't know if I would recommend you run around doing all of that, but...
They are limited. I mean, they only have so many people in their staff. I don't, if we can do something that helps the committee and helps them, I'm happy to go out, I can do research. Sheenrod Report, I can do research.
Charlie?
Well, if we're truly only paying $90,000 a year for leased portables, that changes the picture compared to what I see in the budget as $573,000 for rentals and leases. So it really changes that picture completely.
Do you feel like you understand where the other 480 or 490, because I just am not understanding what that money, it's, so it's in the budget, that 573, and only $90,000 of it is being spent on leases. So what is the other amount being spent on?
So I can get back to you, but how, what I can see is, last year, we had district office as a leased portable, and there was, right, and we don't have it anymore.
So, but would that reduce, is that amount 573, is that, I guess then I'd have the question, you know, we were looking at budget numbers, is that in those budget numbers that are being cut from, or is that decrease already out? Do you see what I'm saying?
So I think the best way is for me to get where you got the 500s.
Yeah.
Right, I think that might be our good stuff.
Okay, yeah.
Just for the record, what we spent last year, Object Code 5600, was $593,000. What we have in the budget this year is $573,000 for rentals, leases, and repairs.
But that's including repairs, so...
Yeah, so I just don't know what that number means.
We spent a lot of money on repairs.
All the leases, it might be including all the laptops, the Apple laptops that we are having also. It includes not only the portables, lease has all other items there. So it might be that, but I will look it up.
We don't know?
Sorry?
We don't know what this number is?
Because I just, this is my first time about the $500,000 for that line item, so, but I know we also lease the laptops, like four-year lease, and it's all included for all entire staff.
Then I would point out that bond fund E would allow us to buy equipment. We could buy rather than lease on the equipment front. So I think...
Can we know how much was spent on travel for administrators for local development? I want to know. Can we ask this in May, or is it still out?
Well, we're not there right now.
Given that I suspect there are various areas where rental costs or annual costs in the general budget could in fact be shifted to other directions, I would absolutely love to see the group take that up.
Let's get some comments from the audience.
Are we going to take comments first, or are we going to take Kim's recommendation that we go through the...
Well, if we go through, that's going to take quite a while, and these people have been waiting, but if they want to defer to us and let us have our conversation first, I think we can do both.
I think so, yeah.
People will probably want to comment on...
I think we could save people a lot of time on comments that might not be the comments to be made tonight if they knew what we were actually discussing tonight and what we were not discussing tonight. I think that would save everyone a lot of emotional energy and a lot of time if we, you know, if we really are willing just to talk about what's in Table 1 and focus our attention there. That would save, I think, a lot of effort.
So if you want to say we're not going to discuss anything that's not in Table 1, is that what you're proposing?
Well, you know, I'd like to have the opportunity to speak about a couple items. I'm hearing people say they want to add things, so, okay, you can add your own salary to that if you want to, or whatever it is you're proposing, okay. But, you know, I don't think that, I just don't think the discussion is going to be very productive if people are really worried about what they're seeing in Table 2.
Okay, so we'll solicit input. Charlie's recommendation is, if it's in Table 2 or 3, you might be wasting your time talking about it tonight. But in any case, try to keep your comments to three minutes or less, and if somebody else has already made the comment, just say you've agreed with it and move on. Jacob?
Yeah, I want to second that from Paul. I appreciate everybody being here, but also some of the meetings, people have just come up here and basically said, I don't care if it's three minutes, and have just talked as long as they want. And I'm hoping that we can all be respectful of everybody here, because when people do that, other people who are in the audience might not get a chance to speak. And I've mentioned I'm a teacher in San Leandro when I've gone to board meetings before, and I would never just say, oh, I know you have a three-minute limit, but I'm just going to go and speak as long as I'd like. So if people could please respect that, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
So I have questions that I want to be able to have answered, and if not at this
meeting, in the following. But last year, we were having the same damn conversation about the budget, no movement. And now the numbers that these incredible volunteers, thank you, the committee that set this forward, you guys punted your jobs as school board members over to these parents and these stakeholders. There's questions that have been asked of every single one of you since last year, and still no answers. We asked you how much was being spent for travel. We asked you how many special ed assessments are being made for children out of the school district, which is also costing us money for the district. We said in November, there's an issue, if there's money issues, then why are we giving out raises? And that was still not addressed. It was still given in December. You know, Val, we've had conversations about this. In any event, my comments are directed at, you guys are putting the stress on us, the families, to try and figure out what your job should have been, and you guys were supposed to be able to give us these figures. These 19, 20 hours or more that you're asking these three stakeholders to be able to do that is really senseless, simply because they're doing the work that was yours to do in the first place. And I want to be able to make sure that you understand, there's a lot of costs that have been made, but it's not fair for you to put it only on the shoulders of these folks and say, well, you know, we've sat on the board for a whole year, we knew this was on our plates, and yet we have not addressed it. And for you to say, you guys can put your salaries on this chopping block? No, sir. This is why I enjoy elections, because people in the silence of their living rooms, when they go vote, they decide, this is why this person should not represent my interests. They're not representing my family or my children in the district. I am asking every single one of you that we've asked for numbers and figures. You put out surveys at large at the Albany Stroll, and yet there was not a configured number that you can tell us, this is what the community wants, this is what the parents are willing to sacrifice. And no proposals, no concrete proposals have come from you. This is an incredible step that these stakeholders made, and I appreciate the work that they've made. But those 19 hours took you one year, and still nothing from these board members. Thank you.
I'd like to comment on that.
Jacob?
Is it staff's job or the board's job to get this work done? There are certain things that are supposed to come to us, and we're supposed to approve them. I was never aware that I was supposed to sit there and put this budget together, because I could have done it. And I've been told there are certain things we can do and certain things we can't do. So I don't know if you're directing these comments towards the board or to staff, because I think they should be directed towards staff. You're using the word "board members" as if we've done nothing. I've been trying as hard as I can to get these cuts implemented, and I know they're going to be painful. They were supposed to happen last year, there was some accounting movement, that all of a sudden, we didn't have to do it. And I appreciate you coming up, but sometimes when you're like, the board, this and that, you might want to go back and look and see sometimes how I voted certain ways. I'm trying to have this get done, and I've been told many, many times, it's not our job, isn't their job. So... times, "It's not our job, isn't their job." So I don't know if you wanna respond or whatever, but I would like it, because we take a lot of, we take...
My comments are not directed at you, Jacob. My comments are not directed at you. But this board acts like you work for the damn district, and it's the other...
I know it is, and I've been trying to do something about it for a long time.
But you as school board members were elected to do. But every time that there's been school board meetings, the board are always saying, "Whatever the district tells us, whatever they have to, whatever they say, that's our bottom line." That's what, that's what I'm asking. I'm not criticizing you. If I had anything to say about you, I'd call you up by your name. But I'm saying, school board members. That means everybody else is on the board.
Yes.
Jacob, if I had anything to say, I'll say to you, I have no problem.
No, and I appreciate you coming up and speaking up, you know, I...
But one damn year, several raises have been given to folks. That's the problem I ask.
I tried to stop, I tried to stop all those raises.
That they shouldn't suffer, and they're okay. Our kids don't really matter in this conversation.
I, I can...
You keep trying to chop off my damn head, but I've already sat here every damn meeting for the last two fucking years, and all you try doing is removing me with the police. So I will stand here for another one if that's what it takes.
I can, I can, let me answer your, your question. It is my responsibility to bring to the board my plan for reduc- reducing the budget. And up until today, 2.5 million dollars in order for us to balance the budget so that we can be solvent. So that is staff's responsibility and my decision to come up with a budget reduction plan.
Uh, Charlie, did you wanna say something?
You know, it's gonna be a long, hard meeting if people go this route.
I would like to respond.
Come on, next.
Thank you. Once again, my name is Cheryl Thies. I'm one of the education advocates at Drediff, the Disability Rights Education and Defense Fund, and a longtime, too long, parent in the district. I think I've said this before, but I've been in this district since 1980 with a child who is now dean of Berkeley Law, and a child who's a physician, and I'm very grateful for all the work the district has done. But I have been getting calls all day today from very concerned people regarding Table One. So I just wanna focus on Table One. I don't think that, and I have nothing but incredible respect for the volunteers who worked on the budget. But there's a depth of knowledge and expertise around special education that you have to have to make these kinds of recommendations. And I don't believe that any of them fully have it, and that's not their fault. Together, they're collaborating and making the best decisions they can without the depth of knowledge. I have a fair amount of depth of knowledge. I know how many lawsuits your special education director has prevented, very, very good sense. How many times parents have had relationships repaired and problems resolved through alternative dispute resolution by a special ed director who knows the ins and outs of special education law. Combining special ed and special services together sounds like a great idea, but they're very different skill sets. I have yet, and I work for three counties, San Joaquin, Alameda, and Contra Costa, to see any district do that very well. And I'm frankly disappointed because I think that the board, and I think that the administration knows I have a depth of experience here, because we've worked together really well and collaboratively on a number of issues, and I've appreciated it. I also just wanna point out, having special ed, even if it's just at this administrative level, as the first thing in Table One, goes against the idea that we're not gonna target a single group. The special education students in the state, I don't know Albany's exact numbers, but it's about 10% of our kids who have an IEP, and that's not counting our kids with a 504. Look at the dashboard. They have the lowest graduation rates. They have the lowest outcomes on any of the measures of any other group. So this is the one area where we really need a depth of experience when we start talking about how we're gonna, how we're gonna make these cuts. I also just wanna point out that we do not understand very well, because the state doesn't require us to gather the data. I wish that the district would make this effort to understand that there are incredible intersectionalities here. So students of color with IEPs, LGBTQ students with IEPs, there's a tremendous amount of vulnerability in the student group. So before we make the kinds of cuts around the top leadership, and I'm not, I mean, I, I'm aware of the fact that there's probably a retirement in the future for our current special ed director, and that this might sound like a good time to make this change, but I don't think it's a good idea. And then cutting the behaviorist, you have no idea how much the behaviorists do to resolve issues on, at all the schools across all of Albany. It's tremendous value that they bring. Thanks.
Ross?
Just to, to comment, uh, my, as I said originally, it's the role of the administration to produce a budget, and the administration, with a director of special ed and with a superintendent and with teachers as inputs, can absolutely say, "Seems like a good idea, but..." And, and I absolutely expect only the administration and the special ed director and, and people with those, that level of expertise to be able to say that. I couldn't say that. I am nominally aware of what happens with special education, but the role of the board members as an oversight body is basically to ensure that the organization we oversee, the, the administration via the superintendent, does a good job of it. If the superintendent says, "We're not gonna touch special ed," we need to hear why, but she can tell us why, and we're probably gonna believe it if the case is well-made. So I, I would hope that, that what you're describing is, is readily defensible by the administration, and cuts will come from other areas, or cuts, any cuts to special ed will be far less than deeper cuts in other areas. That's why the administration builds a budget. That's why the board will, in a very large sense, either approve or disapprove of that budget.
And I appreciate that, but I'm concerned that I just heard the budget committee talk about how they didn't necessarily have all the information that they...
We, we really can't have a, you're not at the microphone, so...
My mic was out, so I'm trying to...
Oh, come on.
Well, the thing is that this is recorded and broadcast, so if you're not at the microphone, nobody knows what you're saying, except the people in the room.
I don't wanna take up everybody else's time. I just wanna say, number one, I bring my concerns to the board. I know you're not directly responsible, but I just want to, this is an open forum. This is videotaped. I want the community to work together to resolve these issues. And I just heard a group of people who I have nothing but the largest amount of respect for say, "They may not have had enough time, and they may not have had enough expertise in some of these areas or information to make the recommendations they made." So I just wanna make sure that I get that into the open air in this public forum. Thanks.
Thank you. Kim?
Uh, yeah, I, uh, thank you, Ms. Thies, for speaking. I appreciate your expertise. So here we are on the first line of, of Table One, and I saw it a little bit differently. I saw that as the district office stepping up first and saying, "We need to make cuts, you know, here at the district office first." And I appreciate the acknowledgement there that we need to reorganize and cut at the district office. In terms of the specific cuts, I have concerns, and I've heard concerns from, from various people in, in the community and, and people who are staff at the district, that the special ed director is such a, a critical role and requires such a depth of experience and, and, and knowledge. I, I would hesitate to make that one of the, one of the cuts. I, I believe that we need a director of special education who is, who is an expert. That's it.
So I'm Karen Dehart, co-president of ATA, along with Patty Fujiwara. Okay. So, um, this is gonna sound like a little bit of a reiteration, but we just wanna emphasize, as we represent our teachers, that, you know, you first started out talking about a $1.5 million budget cut. Six months later, you said that the cuts weren't necessary, and we kinda kicked the can down the road, knowing full well that this was gonna come back to haunt us. And now we're at 2.5 million with the understanding that this is gonna increase to 900,000 and potentially even more than that in the coming years. So we're here to say that teachers won't support program cuts until the district has gone back and looked at Table One, at the district level, the office administration level, and, and puts into the report, has the information available. So this is what the committee has also reported out already, but we support that they need the information to go back and re-figure what it would take to cut a million dollars off of the administrative office area. And also, what would it look like to add in the revenues? We've lost over 330 students over the last several years, okay? We are above 2012 levels of staffing at the district office. So what would it look like if we brought in, through inter-district permits, some of those students, if not all of those students, back? We know that that would generate a lot of revenue. Yes, it would cost teachers to put them on staff, but what would the balance be? Because we don't have enough information to even know, to make a good determination. So we are calling for that information to be included by the Budget Advisory Committee, and the information has to come from your office. So, um, we thank the committee for their work, but we know that it is only a partial list, and there are other possible solutions that affect students less severely than the program cuts that none of us wanna talk about. So we do think that Table One can be re-analyzed, and we can think about the cost-saving cuts there, but also the revenue-generating monies that can come in from adding to our student enrollment.
Good evening. Um, I would just like to make, uh, we have a couple additional points. And, um, the union is concerned that issues of mandatory subjects of bargaining have been discussed at the Budget Advisory Committee meetings. We believe this is not negotiating in good faith with our union, in that there have been conversations about wages, salaries, and health and welfare benefits and their associated costs. And we believe as a union that this should be discussed with the exclusive representatives for the employees of ATA and the district during negotiations only.
And one more thing. We want it known to everybody that there was confusion and inconsistency surrounding the board meeting tonight, the location and the time that people were to show up if they wanted to have a stake in what was being said here and learn more. So there were two postings, and we are asking that when there are changes in the postings, the website stated Cornell tonight, beginning at 7:00. Yet, the school board packet that went out in our email stated City Hall at 6:30, and it did require an investigation, you know. Few people called to try to get the information. That wasn't readily available, so that all stakeholders could choose to come here and listen to what's going on. We hope that next time it'll be clear. Thank you.
Excuse me, I'd like to respond to that. I'm actually on the website. It does say Board of Education meeting. It is listed as here, 6:30 to 9:30. We did make sure that we sent out that says that the location was going to be here, and that's because we found out that this venue was open to us tonight.
Yeah, and I understand that those changes often can take place, but Sunday night, it still stated Cornell, and a lot of people were asking me. Thank you.
Kim?
I, I just wanna, I wanna respond to two points. One of them is the, the bringing in of inter-district students, which is a great idea, and I think that we have, I think every, I think many people in Albany would welcome inter-district students if we had room to put them. I wanna remind everyone about the building program. We're shutting down Ocean View School in the, in the near future, and we're going to be moving 300 new students over to the middle school. The middle school is extremely crowded. Only if we get the annex open is this gonna be possible. But if we, when we do that, that means that the middle school is going to have to remain extremely crowded for another few years. In addition, we're gonna be having about 200 students at the high school. Those are gonna be Ocean View students that need a place to go. I, I welcome the idea of, of opening our borders and having more inter-district students. The next few years is not the time that we can possibly do that. We have an incredible shortage of classrooms now, and if you want to hear more about the temporary rehousing plan, there's a meeting on Thursday night of this week where we're gonna be going into all of this in, in detail.
It's at Ocean View?
At Ocean View, in the, in the NPR at Ocean View. The, um, the other point I wanted to bring up is about the revenues, okay? I think that everybody knows that the Measure LL parcel tax, which brings in $278 per parcel, was passed in, um... Yeah, 2014, but it, it began, it was, the year that it began was, uh, July of 2015, and it's operable for six years. So that sun sets on July 1st of 2021. And if I am still on the board in 2020, which my term would run that far, we will definitely be seeing a, a renewal or an increase of that parcel tax. I will do whatever it takes to get a, a group of citizens together that would campaign and run that campaign for us to extend or increase that parcel tax. I will, um, so we are definitely trying to look at our revenue stream in as many ways as possible.
Hi, I was just trying, uh, hoping to provide a little more information about this first item, the administrative cut, and how the committee looked at it. I don't think, I think that what its presence on Table One reflects is a desire for the large administration, but there was actually a lot of disagreement and discussion about the shape of that. And what we understood was that the district will need to sh- if the, if there are gonna be administrative cuts, that, that the district office is gonna need to, um, do it in a way that, um, that the superintendent thinks can work for her. So we had sort of two choices, to not vote for this or to, like, the, this was part of the truncation, not vote for administrative cuts or vote for these ones. But we certainly wanted to, in our language, encourage, "That's where we're talking about creativity and thinking more broadly." I'd say there were several different thoughts, particular, two different particular alternative restructures. And then I and some other people raised, you know, "Well, are there ways that cuts could be borne more broadly? What about, you know, pay cuts and things like that? Is it all just FTE cuts?" So we did discuss a lot of that, but we really, in the end, had to choose administrative cuts or no administrative cuts. And there was not necessarily a, um, full agreement on the committee about the, this particular shape. We didn't, weren't really able to, to change that.
I can add one piece to it. In the initial, um, administrative cuts that, that I proposed to the Budget Advisory Committee, it included the reduction of one site administrator at the high school, and the Budget Advisory Committee agreed to, or chose to take that part of this initial plan off and put it into Table Two.
Hi, I'm Kevin James, and I teach at the high school. I live in Berkeley, so perhaps I'm more sanguine about tax increases than, um, the school board is. But I think ultimately, uh, in, in our, our taxes, our parcel taxes and our property taxes are higher. And I think ultimately that's going to be at least part of your solution here. But you need to have credibility with the voters to do that. You're not going to have credibility with the voters as long as you've got six administrators in the district whose salary schedules top off above $200,000. Wherever they are in those schedules, that's where the schedules are. You're not gonna have credibility with the voters if, um, there's a potential $500,000 discrepancy about how much we're paying for, for modular units, right? I mean, did you just find $500,000 in a meeting? If you did, thank you. Right? I'm delighted, because $500,000 works out to 25 sections of classes at the high school, speaking totally in a disinterested way. in a disinterested way. When I started at the teaching in this district, our high school had a great theater program, remarkable considering the inadequacy of our facilities. They were doing plays by Pirandello. They were doing one play about the mystic poetry of John Donne. Now we're lucky if we can have a musical. And, you know, theater is important. It teaches critical thinking skills. It teaches empathy. It teaches social-emotional skills. It teaches organization and teamwork. For a while, we had a debate team, and we actually funded a debate class, which, if you understand the mechanics of how speech and debate works, you kind of need to do it. And that's, they're breathing fumes right now, the high school. What we didn't have was a Director of Curriculum and Instruction. That job was created specifically for one person, to solve one particular political problem that a previous superintendent had. We didn't have, you know, the superintendent of Student Services was not, you know, there were a number of different jobs that didn't exist. We didn't have a pool manager making over $100,000 a year. I've done that job. It's not a six-figure job. We didn't have six administrators, you know, on a salary spectrum where the top number was over $200,000, even adjusting for inflation, which hasn't been that big in the past 15 years. The kind of cuts, particularly, and I know we're not looking at two, but, you know, those cuts are going to hurt. Those cuts are going to hurt in all sorts of ways. They're going to hurt vulnerable kids in special ed. They're going to hurt talented kids trying to get into college. They're going to hurt everybody in town, and they have to be avoided. And, you know, and frankly, you can sell this to the voters, you know? You say to the voters, this is why you bought a house in Albany. You need to support that. There's millions of studies showing that every dollar, every, I'll finish. Every dollar you, every dollar you pay in property taxes and in parcel taxes for schools comes back to you in increased housing value. So, you know, it's not that big a stretch, but you've got to establish some credibility. And that means, I'm afraid, you're going to have to make some pretty serious cuts at the ever administrative levels. Thank you.
Just wanted to say, as a quick thing, if you like to do your own research, Alameda County tax rolls are online. You can look up your own property and then pick one in Berkeley and look at it, and indeed, you can compare what we pay in ad valorem taxes that go to the schools and parcel taxes that go to the schools in Berkeley is indeed net higher. I think it's more from parcel taxes than the ad valorem. But you can look that up online on acgov.gov or acgov.org.
Hi, I'm Karen Butwinick. I'm a parent of two kids who've gone through the Albany schools, one who's still at the high school. But I'm here in my capacity as a School Care Board member. School Care, as many of you know, is a district-wide fundraising organization, and it was founded about 17 years ago in very similar circumstances where our district was facing severe budget cuts from the state. So let me begin with saying that the School Care Board recognizes that it cannot be the full responsibility of the community to make up for the gaps in funding that our district is facing. We know that this is not only an Albany School District problem, it's hitting other districts. Given our state's wealth, we should be able to adequately fund education. That's not the case. And I just want to urge everyone to advocate at the state level for such education funding increases, which is really necessary. With that said, on behalf of the School Care Board, we will work as hard as possible to mitigate cuts. We'll work with the entire community to raise as much funding as possible as we can to save teachers, staff, and programs. Several School Care Committees have started to meet to identify new sources of funding, and we're also working really hard to increase our current sources. We hope the community will break all fundraising records, but to do this, we will need new donors and more volunteers. We're confident that our common purpose, educating our children, will motivate all of us. I do want to quickly note two specifics in the committee report on Table 1. There was a note about asking School Care to fund a .5 counselor at AMS. I just wanted to be clear with the board and with the district that unfortunately, the way School Care is set up, you can't actually ask us to fund any line item. Our process involves discussing priorities with all the stakeholders. We meet with PTA, site council principals, we survey parents, students, and also teachers, and so that's our process. So we do need to go through that process. With that said, counselors have risen to the top of all surveys over the years at the middle school, and I assume that's going to continue. So this year, School Care has funded a .9 FTE at the AMS to ensure three total counselors. And finally, the committee report included a reduction of $30,000 for library tax at all school levels. For the record, School Care has been funding a total of $79,000 for library tax at all school levels. Library tax have been at the top of our surveys for years at all levels. It may seem like, you know, maybe not that important of a position, but honestly, it affects teachers, it affects the librarian, librarians, of course, makes their job easier. But most importantly, it really, really affects the students. And so I know you're not wanting to impact students as much as possible, so I'd really want you to reconsider the cuts for library tax. I don't know that we'll be able to come up with additional funding in the future for that. We welcome anyone with fundraising expertise and creative ideas to work with School Care in the coming year. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Miriam, and I'm the Treasurer of ATA. And it's interesting to hear the discussion about what the job descriptions are. The board is going to approve the budget, and it's the board's job to make sure that the budget reflects what the board wants. And in order for the board to do that, the board needs to see options provided to them by the district administration. And it's the district administration's job to provide you with options. And let me just be frank in a way which I think maybe the Budget Committee was missing words, she didn't. If Val comes to the Budget Committee with 2.5 million in cuts, and they're supposed to then what prioritize those, they're not going to end up with 2.5 million in cuts. So Val needs to come to you with 500 million in cuts. Val needs to come to you with a million dollars of cuts that could be made at the district office, whether she likes it or not, so that you can make that decision. Val needs to come to you with an actual plan for what it would look like to max out the facilities that we have within our district transfers, so that you can actually look at it. We've asked, as a union, for information about exact class sizes across the district, and we still haven't received that information. Apparently, it's just not available, except for you would just hit a button and print it out of areas. But what we need to know is how many classes at the high school are under-enrolled, how many classrooms at the elementary school are not full, how, we need to know that information before we can actually make. So you cannot speculate and say that we don't have room. We need actual data. And then we need to know, if you did max out those facilities, what would it cost to provide the teaching staff? And you have to use the master schedule to do that kind of calculation, because when you have a high school with multiple classes, you can fit people in in ways that don't necessarily cost as much for a teacher as an elementary classroom, where it's like every 30 kids costs you an extra teacher. So you don't see, you don't have that kind of math, because it hasn't been provided to you. And so, no, you're not in a position to make a decision about whether it's doable or not doable, because you still don't have the information. So what the Teachers Union is trying to say to you tonight is, we won't talk about, we won't talk about the things that are in List 2 and 3 until you have done a decent job of providing options in List Number 1. And that means district office and revenue-increasing options, all of them. And when we are looking at all of them and having a discussion about all of them, instead of just what Val feels like talking about, then we will be making decisions as a community, and you will be doing your job as a board.
Hello, my name is Jeff Castle. I am a teacher at the high school. I'm also the Technology Department Chair. It's my 17th year in the district. I came here tonight to speak on a number of issues, and two of them are in Table 1, so I'll limit my comments to those. The first thing is, with respect to some of the promotions that are being considered and reorg that's been considered for the district office, I would just like to express my concern. And I know there's personnel issues involved, but in those roles that I have at the high school that I mentioned, I also am the site tech lead, so I manage our website. And in my capacity in those positions, I've had the opportunity to work with people at the district office. And when I saw some of the changes that were being considered, I have some real concerns. And there are concerns that were not inquired about by the Budget Advisory Committee. When I speak to my colleagues on campus, they have similar concerns. And I think that Kim alluded to some of them, and so I hope that people will reach out to us and ask. It's, anyway, so that was, that's one thing I wanted to say. And I know that you've heard that from a number of different channels. The second thing is, it hasn't been, it discussed very much, but the recommendation to eliminate the network analyst position at the district office. I oversee all of our computer science classes. Like I said, I manage our website and help all our, I help train our teachers with our SIS and with our gradebooks. I think that, you know, in my 17 years here, this is by far the best our tech support has ever been. And I think that one of the reasons this recommendation got made is maybe because it seems like it could be made, because no one's complaining right now, and things are good. There's no squeaky wheel. But I've seen it when it was squeaking. And so the fact that things are so stable right now, I think, is a testament to your technology director, Dax Kajwara, and the team that he's assembled. And I want to make sure that people understand that if that position is eliminated, that, and things go wrong, that that blame will fall on this body for making that decision. On one level, on a personal level, I have the utmost respect for the person that holds that position, and I can, if you have questions, tell you all sorts of stories about how that person supports hundreds of students on a daily basis at the high school. But even on a non-personal level, just on a general level, I can tell you that if that position is eliminated in this marketplace, in this region, it seems like the board and superintendent might be assuming, well, we have to make cuts somewhere. This is a reasonable place to make it now. And then in richer times, we can hire that position back. But we're lucky to have someone that's so qualified in that position right now, and if we eliminate them, I think we're foolish to think that we'll be able to hire someone back with that same skill set easily. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Hi there, I'm Eric Castillo McIntyre. So this is actually the first time that I see this, I don't know if we can call it a proposal yet, but this scenario for this table. And as the father of a student in the special education program, I'm obviously concerned, especially considering that my wife and I moved to Albany specifically because of the school district, and more specifically because it was after we had our daughter. And we moved here specifically because we wanted her to benefit from the special education program. So I ask that the board and the administration consider, when making these cuts that may affect the special education program, that do it, to do it mindfully, of course, because the students in special education already are at a vulnerable place. And also because the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act requires that the students are provided a free and appropriate public education without concerns for budget. The reality, of course, is that you have to consider a budget, but legally, that cannot really be a consideration when providing the services to the students. And since we're talking numbers, it may be easy to cut from the budget for special education, but then you have to pay it back, because if you're not compliant, you have to face litigation. And litigation tends to be much more expensive than compliances. And lastly, with the time that I have, I do not envy the position of the members of the Budget Committee. I, just by looking at this sheet, I don't have all of the information. I can imagine how difficult it would be to make decisions without the ability to model different scenarios with actual numbers. If A, then B. If B, then C. So I'd ask that if you extend the time for the Budget Committee members, that they be empowered with that possibility. Thank you.
I think we should move now to the board discussion of Table 1. I'm Jacob.
So, yeah, I have a question about the very first one with the $471,000 that's up here. And if you look at the pros, it says away from the sites and students superintendent feels functions can continue. So was this your possible scenario, Val, or did the Budget Advisory Committee come up with this?
It's mine.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Charlie, since this was your suggestion, you want to lead this discussion?
No, I don't want to lead it, but I do want to, I do want to pull one item off of Table 1.
Okay, why don't you start there?
So if we go two pages further, to the bottom of page 121. One more page. Little more, just to the bottom. There, stop, stop, there we go. The proposal to eliminate one counselor position, I would like to pull off of this table for a couple reasons. Those counselors are absolutely critical at the middle school, at the high school also, but at the middle school in, because that's where this, I think, is directed, is the middle school. We cannot meet our goals to support social-emotional learning without those counselors. They're a critical part of that program. And if we want a kind of more legalistic sort of reason to not cut that position, I'm prepared to offer that too. We have a three-year local control accountability plan, which is approved by the county Board of, Office of Education. We are in year two of that three-year program. That three-year program specifies for all three years the exact number of counselors that we now have. So in our approved local control accountability plan, we have the same number of counselors for the next school year that we have for the school year. I think if we just start cutting things that are in our local control accountability plan without going through a process, it makes a mockery of that being a local control accountability plan. It is a set of commitments that have been worked out among all participants. This is the program that the district will provide, and it's a three-year program. Now, it can be done. I mean, what it would require would be, the county would have to re-review the local control accountability plan, and they'd probably approve the change. But I don't think that's a good choice. I think that we have made that commitment. It's something that was developed through a long process, and we should stand by that commitment. So I would like to pull that item.
Okay, I'd like to challenge you. It's easy to pull items out of the table, but that's a $110,000 item. Where would you like us to look to replace that money?
Let me defer that question. I think that this is a $1.3 million table. If we pull some of it out and we're still at $1 million, that's a significant amount of money. You know, what we've heard tonight, that first item, I think it's pretty clear that there's a general sense that we do need to reduce staffing at the administrative level. The Budget Committee itself said that they don't necessarily agree with this specific presentation of it, but they felt that it was important to put a dollar number on there. So, you know, I think that we could endorse something like the $500,000 number that's there without necessarily endorsing the specifics of it. So I just got you $30,000 from $471,000 to $500,000, or we could go to a different number.
Okay. Okay.
Anyway, I feel that that particular one, something that, that essentially violates our local control accountability plan, takes us into new territory.
Right. I, I agree with you that the counselor is essential. I do want to make one general comment. I'm just going to say this once. The general idea is to keep cuts away from the students. And I don't think there's anyone in this district, from the superintendent to the custodians, who don't affect the students. I think cutting administration is going to affect the students, cutting counselors, cutting IT staff. It all comes back to the classroom. So there's nothing we can do, cutting the budget, that isn't going to affect the students. So what we're trying to do is minimize the effect on the students, and there's going to be pain any way we do it. Jacob?
Yeah, if you could please scroll to page 120, to the section of materials and So here we have 106,000, and I can't remember who it was stated by, but at some other previous board meeting, I think this had come up. And I think that I would like to ask staff to dig a little bit deeper in there and see if we can cut much more farther than the 106,000, because I need to see some real hardcore numbers to show that that's the most that we can cut from there. Because I bargained quite a bit myself in San Leandro, and sometimes there's extra funds in there. So I would like us, I'm making a request that we can get more information about how much money is in that fund and how much we can cut.
Jessica?
Yes, I was just going to say that the budget committee was certainly very sensitive to the necessity of the counselors. And it really came down to this issue of you can't say no to everything. And even if the heavier cuts were made at administration, some of these cuts that nobody wants would have to be talked about. I don't know that it's possible to have the revenue solution happen for 1920. And so I just, we were, that was part of our constraint. And we could just say, okay, if there wasn't a curriculum director, but the curriculum director doesn't make two and a half million dollars, so you're still going to have, you know, or this or that, you know, things to cut. And that's where the counselor issue came in, when people spoke very passionately about how impossible it would be to have combination classes at the elementary school. It pretty much ended up taking that, which would be a very sizable amount of money, off the table. And then the issue and the difficulty of talking about any kind of reductions, you know, because I am sensitive to the, the issue of bargaining and that sort of thing, that was off the table. And then everything was sort of, all these big ticket items were off the table. And then issues like, well, what if it wasn't FTE reductions? Because I think this gets to what you were saying, Paul, you know, how would you do a cut that doesn't affect students that much? Well, one might be if everybody was paid a little bit less, rather than just laying off whole sections of people, like, we'll lay off people that teach electives, or we'll lay off people in special ed, or we'll lay off these areas of people, counselors. So that's one thought. I kept wondering why we never talk about that.
Well, because it's negotiable and...
Yeah, but it isn't for, for non-represented people. So anyway.
Okay.
It's just something like all of it. And actually, my position is all of it, rather than, this is my personal position, not as speaking on behalf of the whole committee, is that all of it needs to be looked at. And that includes things that are subject to bargaining and things that aren't, to try to find the thing that's best for students, you know? And, and, and I fully recognize that these things are interconnected, and so I'm not saying it's easy, but, but that's where I think the answer sort of, that kind of thing is a little bit, but.
Thanks.
So Jacob, to your question about the materials and supplies, so I was glancing at the 1718 budget, and I think it was 1.3 million in the district for materials and supplies. So the 100,000 figure seems low to me as well.
Yes.
Also, I've noticed in this, these numbers up here, that the 110 figure for cutting the counselor position, I've heard that that's a standard figure for cutting a staff, is like 110,000 all in, including benefits and retirement. I think it'd be useful to have an all-in figure as well for DO personnel. So if there is like a similarly round number that can be included, just so people have, because part of the difficulty here is breaking these numbers down, 471,000, there's a lot of stuff packed in there. And if people knew more what was what, and there were exact line items, I think people could play with things a lot more. And yeah, that's it.
Thanks. Jacob, do you want to say something?
Yeah, but, go ahead, sir.
Richard Ventura-Usman. I've been the special day class teacher at Albany High School for 17 years, so I've seen the whole gamut from when we started that many years ago. And I think it's important to remember about the first thing regarding special ed director is that not written in stone. I think this, the fact that the current person is leaving opens up the door to have a conversation. So it's not black and white. We have to throw out the baby. We can look at it. That position has not always been a level three director position. And so I think it's important for us to remember that aspect of it. I think it's also important to know, sorry, we've been leadershipless for 10 years. That's just a basic fact, okay? I don't care what the person's title is. So just know that now. So it's not just what you might see on the outside, it's what's going on in the inside for us every single day, dealing with students who have the most vulnerable needs. And I would suggest that the reason we haven't been sued is because the special ed staff in this district are amazing and resourceful, and we make it happen.
Hi, my name is Ben Wallace. I arrived late because I was at a class, so thanks for taking your time. I also had the privilege of serving on the budget committee, such as it is. And it was really a very challenging process, but Val and Jackie worked really hard, everybody, Darren and Stephen and Morgan and, you know, it's been, and thank you so much, Jessica, for writing the first draft of the report. It was a wonderful group of people to work with, and it was a privilege. I don't think any of us liked the report. How can you like a report that does what that report has to do? The one thing I wanted to speak to, where I just wasn't in agreement, was on, on this particular item, I have a lot of concern about the recommendations regarding both the behavior analyst and the special education director. I respect Val's judgment and experience in, you know, making recommendations about how to manage the district office. But I do think, I, I felt like because of the timeframe that we had to work, which is about 45 days and six meetings, very compressed, that we really didn't have the time to understand everything. And this item in particular, like, I really don't even know how it adds up to 471,000. And so I'd like to, I would like the board to, as, as we pass the hat to the board, to really investigate that and to, to explore it. Because I think that there, with the complexity of the issues in the special education department here in Albany, also the, the growing complexity of just the student population who have disabilities and various special education needs, plus the changes that are happening on the state level vis a vis funding and the ways that, and policymaking in special ed, I think it could be a serious mistake to consolidate the position and not, and to not hire externally for a new special ed director. But I, that's my speaking as a parent, as a concerned parent, and ultimately, you know, as a member of the budget committee, you know, I can't speak for the whole committee, but I do think that we did the very best we could.
Thank you for your service. Before we move on, it's nine o'clock after nine o'clock. This meeting is scheduled to be done by 9:30, and we have a long list of review and action items. So we're, we're at the minimum going to have to extend the meeting. I don't know if there are any of these items that we can drop off the table tonight. Kim?
Oh, I'm sorry, you mean agenda items that you want to take off the table, or you want to...
Yes.
Oh.
I don't mean the items in this discussion.
We need an extension now, or should we wait till we get a little bit closer to 9:30?
Well, we're, we're supposed to extend it when we know we're late, so I think we should.
We know we're late. I, I think I'll move that we extend till 10:00 PM.
I'll second that.
Okay. And the superintendent to look through those action items and see if there's any that we can skip. Jacob?
If you could please scroll up to page 123. Yeah, thank you very much. So eliminate district field trip funding by working with the PTAs and other funding groups to form a joint fund to cover the need. Field trips are so valuable for the children, and I understand we were kind of stuck with all these bad scenarios, you know? But to just kind of make a statement up here, and I think Olga might have left already, but I'm proposing right now that at least the staff and the current board members who are going to be on the new board coming up, that we don't go to the California School Board Association training, which is maybe not all that money in the bigger scheme of things, but if we're actually going to ask our kids not to go on field trips, but we're still going to have us go to the Moscone Center and get some training, maybe that's not what's needed right now.
Can I clarify?
Sure.
So in value, you can also fill in if this makes more sense, but, so what happens is when we want to have a field trip, at least on the elementary level, we ask for donations, but we cannot refuse a field trip to any student, right? So this is to fill in the rest, but it could still have that effect that you're having. But I just wanted to make sure it's not eliminating all field trips. But yes, it would, we'd need to make sure that every student got a chance to go on that field trip.
Thank you. It wasn't so much about the kids not going on field trips, it's about us talking about these huge numbers, and then staff and the school board is going to go to some, some training. Now, I don't want to speak for the new board members, who are going to be seated very soon. Maybe they would like to go to the training, but it's like, you know, we have to show that we are not spending any extra money. And that's one small little step that I would like to recommend, that we don't go to, but I can't speak for the three new board members.
Just to clarify, my understanding is that was only, we only voted for that by working with the PTAs and other funding groups, so it was contingent on any, on that funding being found. So in a way, it sort of violates our mission not to talk about revenue, but my understanding is that it wouldn't be cut if that second part of the sentence didn't happen. So there wouldn't be any loss of field trips in that item. Does that make sense? It would be to enhance the funding groups.
It does, but it's saying, it's saying if we get extra money.
And it's saying, and don't keep it on this, it's not on there unless the funding's found. Do you see what I'm saying? We didn't recommend anything that would reduce field trips. It's just saying, could you work, could you coordinate better to cover those expenses with outside funders? Nobody would, I don't really want...
I didn't mean any disrespect as far as that.
No, 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 I'm just clarifying.
I was, I was more saying that the staff and the board needs to stop spending any money on anything.
I just wanted to clarify that, that we, we didn't have any proposal that we, we would consider not covering it.
Well, I wasn't sure if it was your proposal or Val's.
Two, two points here.
I'm not sure where these came from.
One is, in terms of creating a budget, I mean, these are great. You're thinking about all the possibilities, and that's important. In terms of actually creating a budget, we can't budget anything that we don't have the money for. So we have to assume when we create our budget that we're getting zero dollars from all the fundraising groups. And then as the year progresses and the fundraising groups donate the money, that can be added into the budget. So I don't know what that is as a line item in the budget, probably not major, but that's just, you know, a minor point. In terms of the training, Jacob is right. We shouldn't be spending any money for that sort of thing right now. I would like to say that some of us have been through multiple trainings at CSBA and have all of our old literature, and could do the training ourselves for free. And I'd be glad to step up and do that.
And I would be glad to help too. I went to the most recent one, the Masters in Governance, had five sessions, and I kept everything.
Right. So I think we can do our own training. The only, yeah, I think we can, we can work that out. Russ?
I, I might respectfully disagree and would leave it to the new oncoming board members. I won't be on the board come January, but we'll have four years of experience across five members on the board, and I think we owe it to the public to let those new board members decide if they are sufficiently up to the task and may need training. We can volunteer, we can offer, I, I would leave it to them to make a decision if they're going to get the CSBA training. I noticed that we lost her at nine o'clock, because we're only supposed to run on this item to eight. Board member-elect Hinkley was in attendance in the audience, which I think is hugely commendable. She's not on this board till January, but I'm really happy, as a citizen of Albany, and as a, a parent of a student in the district, that she is attending these meetings now, I guess to lessen the shock when she arrives in January.
In December.
December.
Is it?
Yeah, I was going to ask for clarification on that. They're, they're being seated on December 11.
The law doesn't go into, the new law doesn't go into effect till next year, so this year it's going to be December.
Okay, so I just wanted to kind of gather us. So in terms of table one, it seems like what we've, what has been said, not that there's been any sort of, you know, vote or decision or anything, is that we, we want to see some reorganization and cut at the district level. The amount listed here is 471,000. We've heard the teachers say that they want a million dollars cut. We heard Charlie say that he, he thinks that half a million is possible. Okay, for materials and supplies reduction, what is listed is 106,000. And we heard a speaker at the podium, and we heard Jacob say that they, they both thought that that could be a higher number, that we could find more savings there. So I, I hope we can do that. I don't know if either of the people who, who spoke on that can sort of name a target, but hopefully we can increase that. In terms of reducing expenditures on teacher laptops by replacing with Chromebook or PC, lengthening the replacement cycle or through other means, I think that lengthening the replacement cycle is what seems like the most likely option there. It's, it's, it's $40,000. And then we get to eliminate teachers, summer workshops, and materials and supplies. And I wanted us to sort of land there because, because nobody has mentioned that yet. And here it is on table one. Okay?
Do you have an opinion on it, or you just want to bring it to our attention?
Well, since we just mentioned, we just talked about the school board training, I thought it was apropos. I, no, I don't. It's a, it's a $100,000 item. I would be happy to hear from teachers in the audience if that feels like something that, that we could skip for a couple of years, or, you know, the, the board is offered to try to help train the new board members, but also to give them the option of having the professional training if they, if they feel the need for that. I wonder if something similar could happen here for the teachers.
Okay.
Yeah, one more way to look at a little bit of extra savings is, I didn't see it here, and I'm trying to remember back, and I'm probably not exactly right with the numbers, but I think our former CBO had put in something like 3% for projected increase to healthcare. And then Doug Krantzler, who was in after him, had like 8% or something. So I would like... So I would like a real number on what that is because if it was budgeted, that it was an 8% increase, but it really was only a 3% increase, there's extra money there too. So I definitely would need that information before, you know, some of these items are smaller, 20,000, 30,000. We have a $550 one, so we need to find where every single dollar is before we can start seriously making decisions on what we're going to unfortunately have to cut.
Jeff, did you want to?
We've seen this pattern at board meetings before. We just had two hours of thoughtful, thoughtful comments about Table 1. We're kind of going through, people are commenting on individual items. Now the meeting is running longer, half the room is left and all of a sudden Kim is flying through the table and we're kind of really starting to get in the meat of, well, okay, what about this, what about that? So I just want to remind you all that this meeting started by us hearing from Budget Advisory Committee that there was significant concern, that they didn't have the ability to do the research they needed to do in order to make informed recommendations to this committee. And with all due respect to Stephen, he's not at the high school, so he was representing teachers, but I'm wondering whether or not, you know, in just in Table 1, the elimination of a counselor potentially, the network analyst, the reorg and promotions that are happening at the district office, those things directly impact the high school. Darren McNally was at, he was on the Budget Advisory Committee, but I've asked him and he specifically said he was there in a role to, to represent administration. And so he didn't discuss a lot of these specific matters related to teachers and counselors at the high school. So I'm curious whether or not the board feels like this table has been assembled with sufficient information to reflect the needs and concerns of the high school.
I appreciate that comment and I personally, I think the table could be better for all the comments I've heard from the audience and from the board, sounds like it could use more thinking through. My, my only question is how much time we have to do that at the next board meeting? Supposed to be making the decisions that will go into the budget that will be presented at the first board meeting in December. So how much time is there for the Budget Committee to refine the numbers?
Two weeks.
I mean, is that it?
They've been left with not enough time.
When I'm looking at so far, what is being asked, let me go back to my, some of my notes here. One was to look at how many inter-district transfers we could bring in to maximize classes, even if we need to add teachers, what would be the savings? That I'm not sure we could get in a week's time. We could try. The other one was the projection for the 3% in healthcare increases versus the 8%, I think that we can find pretty quickly. There was another one, hold on one second.
The materials and supplies.
Right, can we cut deeper than the 106,275? How much is in that fund? And I think I want to add in there like not only how much is in that fund, but what does that fund pay for?
Could I?
Just what are materials and supplies, correct?
Can I just throw in an example? I'm not saying this is what happens here, but sometimes when you look at the spending, if you get a new adoption and all of a sudden, which I think we've gotten some recently, it's this high number. Because not only are you getting the consumables, but you're getting the teachers manuals and all the books and stuff that goes along with it. Each year that goes out, that number gets less because you're not starting with the whole brand new curriculum again. So that's why I was saying we need to really, to look at that.
And I appreciate that you brought that specific example because that was brought up at the Budget Advisory Committee and the one thing we found out was that the consumable supplies are already included in the adoption, so there would, there would have been no savings because it's already attached to it. So I do understand that, that was just an example, but.
The other thing was we needed some clarity around the cost of leasing portables.
Okay, hang on.
Audrey's got something.
Audrey, did you want to say something?
Yeah, it's unrelated to leasing the portables.
So it wasn't just clarity, I'm sorry, it wasn't just the clarity on leasing the portables, but that, the difference between the 500,000 and the 90,000.
Right. Audrey, go ahead.
So yeah, what I've heard from students so far at the high school level is the main concern is the program cuts, which is in Table 2, which is reducing the, the period to six periods a day. Also a concern is the counselor cuts because I know many students that have really benefited from the program and I know the counselors have hundreds of students already. I think the first section in Table 1 is what the students really support because of how large the amount is. And I know Michaela and I really wanted to get more student opinion publicized and possibly, because I don't know how many students even know budget cuts are happening. So if Michaela and I can, through leadership, publicize this more, then I think it would be really helpful.
Kim?
I, I think there's a lot of confusion about what the Budget Advisory Committee intended with this reduce one counselor, asking School Care to add .5 counselor. What, what site are we talking about? Jessica, can you come up to the podium and clarify?
I'll do my best.
And is that a mental health counselor position or an academic counselor position that you're referring to?
Okay, so the, we started, it's in the appendix, with a list of, you know, possibilities from the district and on that was a proposed reduction for two counselors. And, well, it wasn't a proposal, this was like a menu kind of to choose from. And another one was a mental health program cut, which I believe was $67,000, is that right? If it's my memory.
Yes, that's correct.
We heard from, and my understanding was that this was, the counselors were at the middle school and, which have recently increased the number of counselors. And we heard from Mr. Hoppert at, at the middle school about how important these positions are. And I think we all listened to that and were uncomfortable with the two plus the cut to the mental health program, which was described, I still don't have a totally clear picture of it, but my best understanding was that was dealing with like providing essentially therapeutic intervention at the school, whereas the counselors are more like school counselors, but maybe I'm misunderstanding that exactly. But that they work sort of somewhat in a complimentary way. And so this was an effort to kind of minimize the overall by, by pushing down the mental health cut and reducing that, the amount of the counselor cut. And the, the thought was that if School Care was able to, they currently pay for a half FTE, is that right? Point nine, and that if they could, if, that more of their funds could be redirected or we could raise more money, it could reduce the, we could cut 110,000, but not reduce that amount in FTE because, you know, if School Care was able to, to do it. I guess the thought was, since they funded that area before, it might be possible. But it was, you know, as it says in the notes, all very uncertain. Yeah.
I could clarify School Care's position on the counselor. For many years, there were just two counselor positions at the middle school, or 2.6, we funded 2.6. The .6 was really an at-risk counselor and the two counselor positions were just, were split between the three grades. After all the, a couple of years ago when there was all that tension in the district, racial tension, that kind of thing, a lot of mental health concerns were brought forth, especially at the middle school. And there was a need that was demonstrated from a lot of our meeting, meetings with stakeholders and the principal. And Deborah found someone who she felt had, had a lot of training and working with lots of at-risk groups and developing lots of support for a lot of the kids. That was the third, really the third counselor, although it's a little complicated because it's kind of split between two people. But basically, there are now three counselors at the, at the middle school. And that's had a huge impact from, there's a lot of data showing how much positive impact there's been at the middle school because of those three counselor positions. School Care couldn't afford the full FTE, we could only afford .9, the district picked up the rest. If you were to cut out, it looked like we were going to be asked for an additional .5. I don't, I know for sure we couldn't pick up an additional .5. We, if it was going back to, from .9 to .5, we could do that, but again, that would bring us back to where we were before and there were a lot of holes, a lot of kids that fell through the cracks. So I would really encourage the district, if possible, to keep those, those counselor positions intact. I know we can't, it's, right now, the middle school is over allocated compared to the other sites because of that position, but we, as a board, decided it was a critical position. And, you know, different years, different, different sites get more funding. For many years, the elementary schools had more funding with intervention specialists, but when the local control funding formula came in, we were able to shift some of that. So that's kind of how, how it works with, with the School Care funding. But I know we've, we spent a lot of hard work and a lot of discussions trying to make that counselor position happen, so I would hate to see it go.
Thanks. I'm going to ask for these two people who are still waiting to talk, to be the last two, and then the board. I'm going to ask us to try to come to some conclusions, to give directions to staff so that we can move on and do all the rest of the work we have to do tonight. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Annie J. Fishberg and I teach at the high school. I just wanted to jump back to the part of the conversation where we were talking about the schedule and whether or not we felt that there was enough information on here to talk specifically about it. And it sounded like you were listing a few things, some more information that you needed from the DO to have a full conversation about this. And I also just wanted to notice that there have been several people standing up here talking about making sure that we get more information from stakeholders about this. I wanted to make sure that ended up on the list of things that you were recognizing needed to happen before the next meeting.
Thanks for the reminder.
Yeah, and I also wanted to just check in about, I know that a lot of stakeholder information has been solicited in a variety of survey forms. And I was just wondering if that information was considered when putting this schedule together and if that information will be considered going forward. Thank you.
Thanks.
I can answer the question. Everything that was on the website was provided to the board, excuse me, the Budget Advisory Committee, as well as the information from the town hall meeting last year and as well as these survey that was sent out, that was all provided to the Budget Advisory Committee.
Hi. So this is aside from being on the Budget Committee. I am a para educator and I've spent six years with this school district. This year I was moved into resource at the middle school and it's the first time I've been in the general ed classrooms, other than my first year at the elementary level as a para educator for an individual student. The need is, for a counselor is immense. We, and the need for our specialist is, I don't know how one person can do it. We, I'm, I don't know if it's because of electronic devices or if it's a state of angst in the world, but I see students unhinged every day. Our general ed students should be on a behavior program, just like my special ed kids, honestly. I think they would like the criteria around them to help them navigate, but they don't have that luxury. What they do have is, is a counselor. And then we have a few students that need a little bit more than that and we need those special assistants, those special behaviors assistants in there to monitor them and to come up with a plan. It's becoming more and more difficult. I think we all are aware of the urgency for our children, the rising amounts of suicide. It's, it's very real, it's very prevalent, I see it every day. And this year has been a real eye-opener for me. I didn't realize I was insulated by being in special day class. And this, to have the tools to help those students. Our general ed kids need those, they need that. It's the only way that they're going to have any chance of mental health and success. I know that shouldn't be our job, but I'm sorry, it is our job. The parents can't do it on their own, they don't know what to do. I don't want to get on my soapbox here, but I am. Please do not cut those two programs, that person and that counselor, those two counselors, sorry, nervous. Those two people are crucial, they're crucial. I'm not just saying that, I could be saying it for my job, it's because I'm worried about the welfare of all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Russ?
Yeah, so those comments really triggered a thought. The largest portion of our students are Albany residents and I would love to help everybody and I think we will help everybody, but this is a city issue too. And I would really urge that the committee talk to the city council members that they know and can talk, I mean, Rochelle Nason should certainly be able to speak to, to public health, mental health issues. I know Nick Pilch would, would listen. And the city has a responsibility for its citizens who spend most of their time not in the schools and all of their time as Albany residents. So, so if you can, please do engage the city as well. It's pretty late in the process, but if we're, we're booking $200,000 from the soda tax, I believe, on an annual basis and some of it may be going to crossing guards, if there's an urgent need for counselors, let's raise that.
Okay. I'm going to make a proposal here regards to Table 1. We've identified some specific areas where we need more information. The one biggest item here is the first one, it's the central office reorganization. And I'm going to say, you know, it's my, my personal opinion, that the central office, the district office, is supervised directly by the superintendent. And the superintendent needs to have a staff that she can depend on, that can do the work that she needs, knows needs to get done. So I don't think, just personally, I don't think it's the board's job to specify exactly how that reorganization should be done. A different superintendent would probably do it differently. But I think the board can set a target reduction for the district office and ask the superintendent to come up with how to make that happen. I think we've heard a lot about specific positions that need to be protected and the board can certainly weigh in on that, such as the counselor position that Charlie mentioned before. That's, that's my proposal. I think we're, we're close. If we're going to ask the Budget Committee to go back, solicit more input in the little time that they have and rework Table 1, to come back with specifics, so that any place where it says, "We don't know how much this costs" or "This depends on donations," that needs to be revised somehow. And give us something the next meeting that we can possibly work with. Jacob?
I don't feel right putting that back on the Budget Advisory Committee. I know we're all trying to work here together as a team and do what's best, but I know staff has other things to do too, but maybe we're just moving too fast, you know? I mean, to ask them to do this in the next couple of weeks is, is a tall task. And then some of the stuff where it comes back with unknown, they're supposed to figure out how much that stuff is going to save us?
No.
That's not, that's not their job.
No, you're right. If this is too fast, the problem is we have to present an interim budget.
But, yeah, please, Charlie.
Yeah, so I think I can help with that. I don't think we're asking the Budget Advisory Committee to do this. I think we're asking them to continue providing that public venue, that public discussion of, of what is going on here. What we're doing is we're asking staff to do. What we're doing is we're asking staff to do the analysis and bring it to the Budget Advisory Committee, so that it's staff that's actually bringing those numbers. It's an opportunity for the Budget Advisory Committee to be the public discussion, the public forum, where this can be further processed, so that when it comes back to us in two weeks, people have had a chance to talk about it.
Have we asked them if they want to do it? It's a lot of us.
Yeah, well, I think it's, it's such a golden opportunity. Why wouldn't anybody want to do this?
Right, exactly.
So I want to gently remind the board that this is a board-appointed committee, and any meetings we have must be agendized and posted per the Brown Act. So it, it does add some, some timing to that. I'd like to add a couple of things. I agree that the, the plan for central office cuts and reorganization should rest with me. I've spoken with my executive cabinet. We've looked at various pros and cons of, of the reorganization. This is not just taking one position and taking two departments and putting them together and having one person do it. This is a reorganization with a redistribution of duties between two, two of the remaining people. At this point, prior to the Budget Advisory Committee moving the high school VP, or high school co-administrator position to Table 2, the cuts that I had proposed just in that first plan was 24.8% of the $2.5 million proposed cuts. That was going to come from the central office. And I want to say, I think that shows, and I think a board member here said it, a commitment on my part as a superintendent to try as much as possible to reduce the budget at the central office level without it impacting pushing duties down to the site administrators and pushing it down to other staff. Taking the co-administrator position at the site off of Table 1 and putting it Table 2 still constitutes an 18% reduction in terms of dollars. So I'm asking the board to let me make the decision how I'm going to redistribute those duties. And I understand every, every position here is important, every position. And there were some things I didn't put, or that the Budget Advisory Committee was not going to take a look at, because we knew if we cut, it would severely impact. And just by way of an example, we looked carefully at custodial. And it's, our custodial staff works really hard too, and they're spread very thin, our maintenance staffs. We looked at a whole bunch of things. But for the section, and we will get the information to the Budget Advisory Committee, but the decision for central office reductions should rest with me to make the reorganization happen, so that the services are still provided as best as possible. And it is going to be an impact. It is going to be harder. Anytime you reduce any position, it's going to be harder.
So I think we're pretty close. I, I am hoping that the Budget Advisory Committee could meet one more time. I think that you've seen and heard that there's been a winnowing process that's gone on through the committee discussions. People have said, "You should be looking at the whole picture, and then you can, you can work down from that." And that has been done at the Budget Advisory Committee meetings, which are open, public meetings, and anybody can attend them. So I would very much like them to have another go at a further discussion of Table 1 in the two weeks between now and the next board meeting. I think there's time for, for that.
Would any of them like to give any input on, I mean, I don't think it's right. It's like, we're at this, it's going to go through them and then come back to us? Why doesn't it just come to us?
Well, let's hear what they have to say.
So, I mean, as I mentioned before, I think we're all here to help in whatever way we can. But I think there's some, some serious shortcomings of the way that this is sort of set up. And I'm not sure there's any ideal process. And I think what has to happen in order for us to, for me personally, to continue on this committee, is a much larger look at, at just cuts. And I don't think just the few ones there are really going to do it. I mean, especially if you're expecting us to do 2.5 million in cuts. I think as Murray pointed out, I mean, not 500 million, but I mean, we'd need to look at like 4 million in cuts to really play one against the other to see. And even then, it's five people and the community. And yes, they're, they're open to the public, but, you know, it's, it's just not enough representation. As far as the time commitment, I mean, that is a really hard, hard job. And we all have jobs, and, you know, we're in report cards for teachers. And so, I mean, we'd have to, you know, I'd have to personally take a look at that. But I think a lot more work needs to be done on what's going on here and what we can look at before anything else can move forward. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with Stephen. I'd be happy to spend more time, I'd be happy to meet again. But I do think, I mean, we, we can look at if the numbers that are, you know, just unknown on here were found, and we could look at some of those issues, and if that would be helpful. You know, that might be, you know, a little bit of progress. But I think these, some of the bigger things, it's really that issue that Stephen raised, is we're trying to get to 2.5 million from a menu that wasn't very much bigger than that. And so, we really couldn't be, you know, and with things kind of prepackaged, and this isn't a, exactly a criticism, I mean, of, of the district office's work, it's just sort of the nature of how it came out. I mean, one of the things, somebody asked whether we considered past information, and one of the things was that people said the most is, we should have cuts at the administration. So yeah, that, that, what Val proposed did end up on Table 1. But if, it's just going to be still sitting there as itself, that's the main thing people were complaining about, isn't going to change, even if we meet again on that item. So, yeah, I mean, I'm kind of of two minds, like, maybe we could find out more about portables, or this or that, or, you know, take into account this information from school care. But it's not going to be this time for this huge revamping of the whole thing, or this consideration of these broadly different ideas and approaches. That seems unrealistic to me.
Kim?
I just wanted to comment after Jessica, that Charlie, you asked them if they would be willing to meet one more time. That's not my idea. I, I think that we need to have a standing Budget Advisory Committee.
I agree with that.
Yeah. And, and not with the sort of marathon that you've had in the 45 days and the 19 hours and all that. I think that we need to establish a channel for having this kind of representation and outreach to the different stakeholder groups, and to have that all funnel in, you know, for years to come. And I, regarding this one particular meeting, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what's going to come of that, but I want you guys to consider a future and what that would look like. We're not going to get to the 2.5 million for the first interim, but we do need to get to 2.5 million before we pass the June budget. And, and so there's definitely work left to do. And unfortunately, I don't, I don't see any revenue stream except, you know, potentially increased rentals of our facilities that can really play in, because we cannot pass a new tax in this, in this time allotment. And I don't know how much the new governor is going to give us in January, but that hasn't been mentioned yet. That is what changed the picture last year. I've heard Karen come up, you know, again and again to the podium and say, "Well, we were doing this, and then, you know, then we were doing this, and it's because Sacramento is very unpredictable." And so it's not that we're just fickle, you know, it's, it's that we are dependent upon Sacramento to, on how much money they're going to give us. And they don't, they don't give us the final word on how much money they're going to give us until June. And so things are still in play up to the last, you know, the last 100 hours before we pass the budget. I'd also like to ask Ben if he'd be willing to describe the organization, the, the three ways that you were looking at the, the different, the different cuts, and sort of the universes of cuts, and how it, because I found that, I found that very interesting when we were talking privately before. And I, I think we need to hear that. Yeah.
Yes, so what I was describing is, I mean, there was a whole lot of information provided to the committee, but it kind of boiled down into three categories. One category was what I would call line item cuts. So this particular item, like a counselor or administrative cuts, were the largest of that category. So you had your line item cuts, and then you had cuts that changed the way services delivered in the classroom. So that were, that was things like, let's change the, the day from seven periods to six periods, or let's change the class size. So those classroom cuts all would come with consequences, because it meant that you'd have fewer FTE and then layoffs. And there were very, very, a wide variety of scenarios of those. And then there was a third category of cut, which was, we spent a lot of time discussing whether or not we could even talk about them, but essentially, it's salary and benefits. And that would be cuts, you know, sort of broad-based cuts that would affect every teacher and every, you know, staff in the district. And basically, so you have these line items, these changes to the way classroom service is delivered, and then salary and benefits. And if you cut more here, then you don't have to cut so much there. If you cut less here, you've got to cut more there. And, and that's just basic reality. And I think it's important for the public and for the board to, to recognize that, because when we're talking, because it's easy to get into just the line items. It's easy to get into this table, which is just like item, 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 item. But really, what's at stake, anything you don't cut on this table is going to fall into that changes in the classroom, changes salary and benefits. And there's a lot of different positions. I have my own position, but for the sake of just kind of framing the issue, I think it's important to keep those three things in mind.
Thank you.
My only thought was that we should talk about other ways of generating income, and it isn't necessarily that that's the only way. With new minds, new voices, we might have some other ways of bringing in some revenue. But you're right, can it happen between now and June? I don't know that. But I personally have a few ideas that can also be education-based and hopefully can generate some income. And so I'm thinking there might be some other people in the community who have ideas. So if, for me to go further, I wouldn't want my hands tied with just coming up with cuts. I'd also want to have some type of a forum somewhere where we can talk about other ways to create income, that maybe we've never even thought of. That's all.
Good for you, yeah.
I want to share my thoughts, but pity, but if you had any other responses, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Charlie?
Just to say a brief word of my opinion on the committee, if you need us to do another meeting, I'll do another meeting. My wife and kids probably won't be happy to support what we're doing. But I think looking to the past a little bit might be useful, and for me at least, in looking to the future. I guess I have a little bee in my bonnet that the, the board asked for the committee to be formed back in December of 2017. And it was actually formed in, it was, it was formed in August and then seated in September, which just, and I understand there was transitions and whatnot, but I, I asked, like, what if, what if the committee were seated in February of 2018? And if that had happened, even with the changes going on in the administration and whatnot, could the high school principal have come and given a presentation to the committee, and maybe some teachers? So then we'd know a little bit more about what's happening at the high school from their perspective, and what's important, and what's really, what the stakes are. And then could the middle school come and do that in March? And then could the elementary schools come? Or could school care come? Or could special education come? And could the committee form a, a group of community members across parents and teachers and staff that is becoming truly and deeply informed about our budget in unprecedented ways, and then come to you with a much more fully realized set of proposals? That wasn't possible in 45 days, and where we, we are where we are today. So we can't roll back the tape and do it over. But I do want you to think about that in like, what do we want to do going forward? Because there's December 15th, and there is March 15th, and there is June 15th. And I think to be a product, personally, as, to be a productive member of a committee like this, the, if I, if the, if the charge is, go do one meeting and come back to us, I guess I'll do it, but I don't feel good about what the results will be. And I think, thinking about what you really want and what, what the community really needs in the way of digging deep into this budget, there's still time to do that. And I hope that the board would take the opportunity to think about that.
Charlie?
So my original proposal was, in fact, that we would have a standing committee that would operate till the end of the year. The proposal was, we don't need to do this all before the first interim. Give the committee more time to do it. So I, I wanted to just make sure I stated that again, because there seems to be some confusion here. I'm not suggesting that we ask the committee to go wrap up in one meeting between now and two weeks from now. I really, the, the first proposal was that we continue the work of the committee throughout the school year. And if the committee wanted an opportunity to have a meeting between now and two weeks from now, fine, but it was in no way meant to say the committee needed to do everything between now and two weeks from now. If the committee doesn't want to do that, that's fine too, and we'll, we'll, we'll do it again at the board meeting in two weeks. I think if we're going to do that, if there's going to be no further public discussion between now and the next board meeting, then there are a number of things that I would like to hear brought back, in addition to what, what staff has mentioned. Our general administration budget is 3.4 million. And so the idea that we would make a million dollar cut represents a 30% cut in general administration. If that's something that's going to be considered seriously, I would need to hear how that would work. A 30% cut is a large cut. So if people want to think about that and consider it, I'm going to need to see how that would work. Right now, you've got about a 15% cut, maybe 18% cut on the table, something like that. That I can imagine. And you've offered one scenario, there are other scenarios that could be implemented. I can imagine that 15% cut. But if we're going to be serious about a 30% cut, I, I need some more evidence that that would work. We've talked about the materials and supplies budget. You know, the $106,000 reduction is something like a 10% reduction from our $1.3 million materials and supplies budget. But we have to remember that the current materials and supply budget is 16% lower than it was five years ago. We've had declining support for materials and supplies. So it sounds easy to say, well, let's cut materials and supplies, but I need to know what the actual impact is of making another 10% reduction on top of the 16% that's gone before. So those are some details, I'd like to hear those. I expressed my concerns about the counselor position. I'm skeptical about making that reduction. I, I'd need, need to hear more about that. And I think then, if we're really thinking about this in the overall context, it's almost impossible to avoid starting to talk about Table 2 at some point. And I, there's several items on Table 2 that I think we're going to have to talk about, the committee's going to have to talk about. So just to toss out a couple of them, in the ongoing work, not necessarily between now and December, but in the ongoing work, some serious thought needs to be given to the high school master high school master schedule. Basically, when the district tried cutting FTE to the equivalent of an average of six students, or six periods per student in the early 2000s, it didn't work. The master schedule needs some flexibility. It didn't work, and we wound up with the state imposing a penalty on the school district. So there's a lot that really needs to be talked about there. I have some real concerns about cutting a site administrator position when we're going into a period where Ocean View Elementary will be split among three different campuses. I think we're going to want that administrative position to help with that kind of transition for Ocean View. There's just a lot in Table 2 that requires some real significant discussion. So, you know, I think that that could be part of the long-term work of the budget committee, but maybe you need to hear from us about the specific questions we have about some of those items.
Right, so are you proposing we talk about that?
I think what we need to do is, we need to be clear with the budget advisory committee what specific questions we have about Table 2 that we would like them to be investigating.
Right, but the question is, as it's five minutes to 10, and we haven't started on our review and action items.
Not tonight.
When are you proposing doing that?
Well, that's what I'm saying. If it's not going to have, if we're not going to have another budget advisory committee meeting between now and two weeks from now, then in two weeks, the board needs to provide some specific questions to the budget advisory committee.
So you want to have that discussion about Table 2 in two weeks, along with giving direction to staff about what cuts to make for the budget?
I think it's, we're giving direction to staff about Table 1 and what we're wanting them to implement in the first interim budget. And we're also providing direction as to what kind of questions the board has that they really want to have studied further.
Okay, Jacob?
So yeah, in two weeks when we come back, if we're supposed to be getting close to making a decision on whatever amount we're going to cut, I need to know the recent healthcare benefits that went to the administrators that was not there before, that was presented here as being cost-neutral, which I was very skeptical about that. So I would like to see, whatever data is available, if it truly was cost-neutral, or if it costs us a lot of extra money like I suspect it did.
Kim and then Michaela.
Also, at the next meeting, I think that we need to revisit the budget advisory committee's mission. We had a statement at the, from Morgan at the podium about she wanted to, the committee to be able to consider revenue. So I, so that's also another agenda item. And we might need to, there might be a few other things about the committee structure. You know, Jeff Castle asked if, if the advisory committee felt that the high school was adequately represented. So I think that there's some things to discuss there as well. I also, I'm going to say, I'm going to say this, because this is a Table 1 thing that wasn't discussed at all. It was, there were three furlough days that were listed in Table 1. And I, I think that those are probably necessary, given the state of our budget. And I would also like to see those reflected throughout the district. So I would like to also see administration taking the furlough days. I think that everybody understands that furlough days, it's a temporary pay cut, is what it is. I mean, when you're a professional, you get the work done. And if we have to have these furlough days for a couple of years before we are able to generate a revenue stream that supports the district more fully, you know, I think that it shouldn't just be the, the teachers, I think it should be everybody.
Michaela?
Yeah, I'm related directly to what Kim just said, but at the next meeting, I know me and Audrey would also like to talk more about the student input, about these two different, about all of the things on Table 1. I know that we haven't had a chance really to gather student input about that, but I think that is really valuable, because that is ultimately who these changes are going to be affecting, in addition to others as well. So at the next meeting, we would definitely like to bring more student input to the table.
Okay, thanks. Jacob?
Just one thing to that, if you can get it to it as soon as possible, like if you happen to get it next week, maybe instead of bringing it all to us at the board meeting, if you can give us a little bit of time to look at it.
We have.
We're not rushing it all, but as soon as you get it, that'd be great.
Also, I would urge our student board members to also ask students about high school issues in Table 2. There's a lot of stuff in Table 2 that.
There's a lot of concern right now, especially the first, the six-period day.
Okay, we are at 10 o'clock, which is what we extended the meeting to.
Meeting's over.
Right, so the question is, do we have clear instruction to staff for what we want to happen at the next meeting? And then I want to ask staff what in review and action we need to cover tonight, then we can extend the meeting again. So are we clear as to what's, what you need to do? You're just, you know.
So let me.
You're just asking for the world.
Thank you, and I appreciate that.
You have two whole weeks to give it to us.
Yes.
You're asking us to vote too, with insufficient information, so.
We're not voting tonight.
Two weeks from now.
In two weeks, you're asking us to vote, so it's this big burden on them that, oh, we're asking the world of them, but you're asking us to make the final decisions.
No, we're asking them, I just want to be clear if they know what we're asking them to do.
What are we voting on in two weeks? We're, everything.
Voting on what will go into the budget two weeks after that.
So let me, I'm sorry.
The budget is to be developed by the administration. We, as the board, can absolutely vote, an expression of our priorities.
That's it.
That's what we're doing. That's, that's all we're doing, and that is weighed against a reality. When someone says, none of you on the board are special ed teachers, and here's what I know about special ed, all those inputs percolate in with the administration.
Yes, understood.
So let me, let me say it, and then you can tell me if I understand clearly or not, and you can clarify. The next board meeting, we have an item on budget. The board would like me to bring the student input on Table 1, and potentially on Table 2, but at least for sure, Table 1. Materials and supplies, can we cut deeper than the 106-275? How much is in that fund, and what is that funding? Clarity on leasing portables and the differences between the 500,000 and the 90,000? The projected 3% increase in healthcare increases, excuse me, versus the 8% that was previously discussed? What, if possible, the potential savings for bringing in inter-district transfers and maximizing class loads, I guess? Recent health and welfare benefits that was provided to administration, and was it cost-neutral? I added in there, Jacob, if not neutral, what was the cost? Because I think that's really what you were asking me as well. I know you didn't say it, but I'm kind of getting that, yes? Thank you, okay. Also, an agenda, an additional agenda item to give, or to review the budget advisory committee's mission, and to determine if that mission should be restated or changed. Is I clear on that? Okay, thank you, hold on one second, please. The board wants to provide specific questions to the budget advisory committee on Table 2, but I think that's further down the road. I do have one clarifying question.
Val, I have, I have, you talked about clarifying the mission, but I think it should be the mission and the structure. I think it's possible as well as, we might need to have a secondary teacher representative. I know we've been thinking about it in terms of the bargaining units, but we, we may, you know, it's for the board to consider, the mission and structure.
Yeah, and actually, I really support that. So I'm seeing, that is a separate review, and that would probably be a review, and do another, it's a review and discussion item first, and then bring it back as a review and action? Or would you like that?
I think you need to make it a review and action, or don't put it in discussion until the new board is seated, because you'd have the new board voting on a discussion that the old board had, and that wouldn't work.
Right, so this one, I'm going to go back to the budget in a minute, but this is really specifically for the budget advisory commission, budget advisory committee's mission and structure for this next agenda item in two weeks. You would like that as a review and?
Would you like to bring that back in, at the first meeting in December instead, so that the new board can discuss it, rather than this board discussing it?
I think it's pretty clear what they ask for. I would actually prefer it to be brought back in review and action at the next meeting, and if the board doesn't want, you know, anybody on the board could ask to table that if they're uncomfortable.
So for the, the budget reduction plan, does the board want that as a review and action? Because this is where it gets a little bit, because I have to bring you the information, there's, there's two things I need to do. One is to bring you the information that you're requesting with as much detail as I possibly can, but two, I also need to come up with a budget reduction plan, unless, unless the board would like me to not bring forward my budget reduction plan in November, I would have to bring it in December, but that would not give Jackie enough time to add the, any budget reduction to the first interim. And I know there's discussion about moving that forward.
Okay, first, we need to extend the meeting.
So I move we extend till 10:15.
Okay. Second?
Well, before that, can we look and see what needs to be voted on tonight, before we decide how much longer the meeting needs to be?
Yes.
I know at least one, one more thing that doesn't need to be, doesn't need to be done tonight.
Thank you. So what's on review and action, the employees to permanent probationary status, that, that needs to happen. The provisional internship permit, that needs to happen. The master contract does need to happen. The independent contract agreement with Challenge Day Program, I believe that needs to happen as well. Now, the board by laws, meetings and notices, if the board wishes to postpone that, and wishes to postpone.
It's about what's going to happen on the 11th, so that can definitely be.
Right, and, and the governance handbook, the annual reorganization of the board.
Can be changed, okay.
That's what, that's what I was talking about.
Valuation already took off, and business services, independent contract agreement.
With Beacon Consulting Group, we do have people here from.
Oh, really?
Yes. They waited, yes. They came in, they did see, they came in a little bit later, but they are here.
They don't get credit for the whole meeting.
Better include that then.
And actually, if we're going to, if we're going to do that, I would suggest we make it the first of our action items.
I was going to say the same thing.
Some of these others you could probably do in like a.
Yeah.
Fifteen minutes?
Let's say it to 10:20.
10:20 it is.
Okay, now then, are we asking the superintendent to come back with her proposed budget reduction plan, Table 1, next meeting that we can vote on? Is that what we're asking her to do?
Well, my two cents is, yes, review and action, because I don't know how to provide overall direction to staff without seeing the details. I need to know, what does it mean to tell Jackie to take a million dollars out of the budget?
So we'll want to see numbers on all the columns. We'll want to see if she wants to revise her first item there in the reorganization of the district office, whatever she wants to do. But we want to see the whole Table 1 first-round cuts that we can vote on, we can modify it before we vote on it, but we want to see it something tomorrow. Is that right?
So now, we're supposed to be making a final decision in two weeks? Before it was the 27th, then it was the 11th, we're saying we're moving too fast, but then now we're trying to vote in two weeks.
No, that's right. But what we'll be voting on is first interim, with opportunities to make changes for second and third interim. So it, it won't be the final budget for the district, but it will be something that can go to the county for first interim.
If all the requests that we gave to staff come back, and it's a sufficient answer, then I think we might be able to vote on it. But if there's still.
If you can't vote, then you can table it, but they'll still have to come up with a budget two weeks later.
I, I think also that the, to Jacob's point, I can bring my plan to the board, and the board can approve it either in total, the board can approve in partial, the board can decide not to approve.
If, if you don't bring it, we can't do anything. If you do bring it, we might delay, but we've still had an opportunity.
An opportunity. Kim?
And I think it's important that we do, do that and vote, and not, not just sort of on priorities, but on actualities, because I think that the Albany community wants to see what the board says, whether we can get behind these cuts or not. Yeah, so I think it needs to be an action item.
And please know that there is an item in the first table that is subject to bargaining. So while I make, you know, I can't, I can't put.
It can't be in the budget.
Right, I can't put the furlough days in that plan.
Right, okay. Right, and we also understand the way that donation funds work. We understand that the, you know, that those are not, like the PTA money for field trip things, we, we get it.
Okay.
Jacob?
Yeah, Kim brought up an interesting point, that the public needs to know what the board wants. This board is basically almost gone. So we are, they, they just voted, and there's going to be three new board members on the board. And I know that there's certain things that we can do now, but there's some certain things that can be done later. And to actually say that we need to let the public know what the boards want, this, this board is not.
No, you're right.
The people are going to have for the next four years.
You guys will be revising it for second interim and third.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear, thanks.
I'm sorry, one more question of clarification. What I, I do know the board said that there's no way the budget advisory committee is going to be able to meet in the next probably week or two, and, and that's correct. So does the board want to wait until after it has its discussion on the charge and the structure of the budget advisory committee before we schedule any further meetings? It sounds logical, I just want to make some clarifying.
Yeah, I think that's logical.
Thank you.
Okay, so how about business services, independent contract agreement with Beacon Consulting This is on page 225 of your board packet.
Okay, so this item is to review and approve the independent contract agreement with Beacon Consulting Group to implement Prop 39 energy-efficient project, non-Prop 39 energy-efficient project, and miscellaneous work for a total of $123,000 from 2018 to 2021. So this $123,000 will be paid, about $61,000 from Prop 39, $53,000 from our general fund, which is a maintenance account, and $8,100 from the grant money that consultant will help us to get it. And she has a presentation for us?
So I am a very long-term parent. I have been doing this since my child was in second grade. He is ready to graduate from college, hallelujah. So I'm not going to bore you all. I've been a volunteer, I've been a parent, I've been an employee, I've been a consultant. And all this comes back to me, because I was here when Dr. Wong said, oh, God, we've got to cut everything. And I said, okay, I come out of corporate, I'll save you 50 grand a year. And we saved two, over $200,000 a year. My job is to find places in your operating budget, through utilities, through water, whatever, through grants, to give you more money for your operating budget. That's basically my job. And I was hired after I graduated from school, to work for ACOE, take the program that I developed here with my engineer, and to take it throughout the county. So we now. So we now serve a lot of school districts in the county doing exactly the same thing, finding money. My job is to hunt for money. So we helped Albany to save that money by borrowing money from one of your bond funds and to get savings. We worked with Ellen to get your $740,000 of Prop 39 fund, get it approved. Now, Ellen chose to put 83% of that into your construction costs, which is why we're also talking about non Prop 39 projects. Of the Prop 39 projects, about 100, I'm just talking to you, so I'm not advanced. I'm trying to just get through because you guys have been here so long. So I'm just trying to, we need to implement the projects. Because if we don't implement them, we don't report them, you'd have to give the money back. Okay? So I need to make sure you don't do that. So I have to make sure everything's encumbered, everything's reported, everything's completed. Okay? That's our job. Okay, so number one. Number two. Okay. So these are the Prop 39 projects, which you've already reviewed. The highlighted yellow ones are the 83% that were allocated to your construction. That left us with about 120-some thousand, 130,000 that we actually have to do energy efficiency. If we do energy efficiency, we'll save you money. Okay? That goes into your pocket to pay your staff or whatever the issue is that you want to Non Prop 39 projects would have been projects that we normally would have done for other schools. So for other schools except this school district, we did not put money into a construction bond. We just did them for any way we can find the best way to save you money. Okay? So, but because we did that, we have left on the table these great projects that will save you about $99,000 a year, roughly. Okay? But don't hold me to that because, you know, PG&E raises the rate every year. Okay? So I cannot account for what PG&E is going to charge you, but at least your kilowatts or your thermes will be lower. Okay? And this is what we really would like to do. Because we really can save it for you in less than two years. Okay? Next. So we, I merge them together in this really complex graph, and I don't really want to go through it too much. But what it says is, we asked Dee Santos to tell us how much it saves in labor. Because it's not just energy or water or that kind of stuff. Your guys and gals have to go out there and adjust things, change light bulbs, you know, hinker around with the controllers of the irrigation system. So those were the people hours that will save you also. So for example, your light fix, your light bulbs usually last a year or two years, then they burn out. Your guys or gals have to go get forklifts, lift themselves up, you know, and change them. The LEDs that Puck is going to put in will last 10 years. That will save you a lot of time. Okay? Because you're really squeezing your budget, so you need to think about your maintenance staff and people running around. I have already saved you, I already have gotten new stuff, and I'm always looking for stuff. So I got you 40, about $38,000 worth of garden equipment. It's zero emissions because it's battery operated, and I traded in your diesel gas-producing Odiferous equipment. Okay? Your guys were not happy with the lawn mower. I have another 5,000 lined up, but I need to be able to execute that. It's all set up with Bay Area air quality people. I took your guys over to UC Berkeley to drive the mower around that they have, and your guys love it, but I need to be able to do that. Okay? I'm getting for Newark Unified, $4 million worth of free electric vehicle buses. Okay? That's the kind of thing that I'm looking for. I'm also trying to put together, I've been working on this for years, it takes years, a Prop 1 grant for water efficiency, because most of the water in California is lost to leaks. 10% is lost to leaks. My hypothesis is it's more like 30% in schools and public agencies. Because if you don't see it, no one thinks about it. Okay? I mean, that's the reality. So at Newark, I save them tons of water by doing leak detection repair. So that's the grant that I would like to ask you if you want to join. You would be joining it with a lot of other schools, including UC Berkeley, Paralta Colleges, Newark Unified, blah, 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 and all those other guys. Okay? So I am asking if you would consider joining us for that grant. Okay. So there were three questions that were given to me today by Jackie. And one of them was, on the proposed energy management system of $440,000, Puck here proposed, it's not on there because I didn't get it, proposed $38,000. So why is there such a big differential? Because the EMS system, the mechanical people, Marina Mechanical recommended is old school. So it would be wired like mad to try and save you energy. Puck has been working with a lot of other schools, and it is a wireless thermostat system, and it would only cost you 38 grand. So you're making a smarter decision. But I wouldn't have known that unless I had Puck. Okay? So part of our non Prop 39 thing is to try and implement a thermostat system to continue to reduce your operating costs in air conditioning and heating. That was one question. Second question, why are we considering going beyond Prop 39 and using Prop General Fund money when you are considering all these cuts? Because if I have money to save you money, I will save you $98,000 a year. And you will get that money back in a shorter time. Now, the third question was, if you, when I was working with Dr. Wong, saved us 200,000 out of the 400-and-some thousand dollars that we had borrowed from another bond, why did it take you four point-some years and not two years? And the reason is, they were very complicated projects. It was a co-gen at the pool, which was incredibly difficult. We had to get him and a whole bunch of other engineers to go work on it. It was in the old pool room. It was a dying electrical system. Okay? We had to get Bay Area air quality to approve the project. We had to get a co-gen agreement with PG&E so you can get a lower rate for natural gas. We had to go and get DSA approval. We had to do all these things that then lengthened the time to get your payback. Lighting projects are a snap, right? Six months, maybe less. Cranks them out like pies, okay? So it will not be the long period because they're not complicated projects like we had before. So you are the school that I started with. Your program has rolled out. Now we're in Marin County. Now I'm getting calls from Santa Clara County. You are the reason I am doing this. Okay? So bravo to you all. Because you deserve it. And the county really appreciates it. And Sheila Jordan screamed at us that we must provide teaching opportunities to your students. You had two sets of students come before you, tell them what you're going to do. We will have the third prop, Mrs. Fucciara.
Yeah, we have a third one.
They are now started, and they will be overseeing, I'm not plugging things in, of course. They will be overseeing the thermostat work, et cetera, as their learning experience. And you have great students. We are very, very pleased with the students that we've had here. And that's it. Okay? Is that fast enough?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any questions?
So not so much a question, but for me, this is just an absolute yes. There's no reason not to do this. I thought maybe I would just add, when you did this before, as I recall, although you borrowed that initial $435,000 from the Bond A fund, we used to repay a fixed amount each year. Each year you'd come to the board, you'd tell us, I saved a certain amount of money. And we would pay a fixed amount, like 100,000 a year, back to the Bond Fund. But you were actually saving us 200,000 a year. So it was, it was something where it wasn't necessary to repay the Bond Fund in two years, but you were actually bringing savings to the General Fund immediately. That was the priority.
Right. So Charlie, was that a motion?
That was a motion to approve.
I have questions. I'm sorry. This is, this is difficult for me to.
Then we need to extend the meeting.
Well, we needed to anyhow two minutes ago. So first, I move that we extend the meeting until 10:35.
Okay.
Okay? And then this, these wireless thermostats, what, it's, it says the scope of work consists of falling for Albany Middle School, Albany High School, Cornell, Cougar Field, and perhaps other sites. So is this talking about the new construction or is this talking about the existing buildings?
Existing building.
The existing buildings. Okay. And so Charlie, you're also with me on the design team work. So we're using wireless thermostats already in our new facilities construction? So?
I think that's right, but I would have to go look at the details in the new construction.
Right.
Because, well, we don't have the details on Ocean View, but I think on the two that are in progress.
Well, what does the, because this isn't a savings in terms of the wiring, because the buildings are already wired with these thermostats, where does the savings come from? $440,000, that's, that's not small change. Where, yeah, this is a big number.
I think original plan was the EMS, the energy management system, the $400,000. We're just not going to buy that one. We're just going to buy the cheaper thermostat, doing the same job. But that's a saving.
There's a real technology shift. Away from the old wired up system.
Could you talk into the mic, please?
It's a shift in technology. So it's going from where you wire every room and every thermostat, which costs 440, because that was going to be the cost to do the high school. And now, instead of having it all wired, it is now wireless, and it is cheaper, and it should be, and we taught, when we were talking to Ellen, we said this should be the standard that you use. So that instead of spending all that money for an EMS, you just do wireless for a lot lower cost.
Don't we have thermostats at these schools already?
Yeah, the reason that they, they need to be upgraded, thermostats get removed. So these are new thermostats.
So do you mean that if we had gone with the EMS system, the wiring would have had to have been changed or just the thermostats themselves are that much more expensive?
You need to put the new wiring for the EMS system.
We would have had to have run new wires in the walls.
Run the wiring, yeah.
Okay. Okay, then that explains why the savings is so great. Okay, let me see if I had any other. Well, I have a question more for Jackie, which is, was this, but was this amount that we're pulling out of the General Fund for these projects budgeted in our maintenance budget? What kind of impact does this have on our General Fund? Because it's $130,000.
So the General Fund will cover 53,000. Prop 39 will pay for about 61,000. So General Fund impact will be about 53,000.
Okay, so let me see. This was on the slide that you have, 2018, 2021, the LEAP proposed work?
Maybe we can see page 226. So if you can.
Are we, we have that?
Say.
Yeah, that's, that's the page you're on, 226.
And then if you can scroll up or down a little. Right. So.
More, more, more.
So that's where the financial information are. Breakdown how we are going to pay for this service.
Was your question, Kim, whether this has already been budgeted or?
Right. So I don't think this General Fund was budgeted. However, Prop 39 is, yes.
So this is $50,000 that has not been budgeted. Because the slide, on one of the slides, it says additional energy products, non Prop 13, $130,000. So that's, so if they progressed on to their slides, it says that there.
Hey, Kim, I'm thinking that what I'm seeing there is, we're putting 53,000 out of the General Fund, which will save us 99,000 that we're not going to have to spend out of the General Fund.
In the same year or in future years?
I mean, if you give us the.
Please hit, talk into the mic.
If you give us some money, and Puck, you already have a specified, the equipment, right?
Right, I mean, the project is being ready to go.
So he can, you know, you give us a purchase order, you give us a contract, he has all the vendors, the contractors lined up. And then we just have to pick a date that you want us to do it.
Okay. So can this be accommodated in our normal maintenance budget?
Yes. Yes. Because we are going to save more money in the same account, in maintenance account.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. It's a net gain.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion? We have a motion on the table.
I second Charlie's motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. This brings us to Human Resources, recommendation to designate certificated employees to permanent and probationary status. Do we have any discussion or question?
How about a motion?
Or a motion.
I mean, I don't have a reason.
We just need a motion in a second. Right?
Yes, we do. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to approve the recommendation. Do we have?
Yes.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We're done.
Very persuasive, Cheryl, thank you. Provisional internship permit.
We have a job share teacher who's working Point 2 FTE one day a week. She has retired, resigned. We are proposing a provisional internship permit to allow Yael Bloom to continue in that position one day a week. She's been subbing in that position since the start of the year.
I would like to move that we approve this provisional internship permit.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Special education master contract with Seneca Family of Agencies.
Yes, thank you. Dymary did have to leave, so she did want me to explain that this is a contract for a student to attend a Seneca non-public school. Seneca schools provide counseling, enrich classes. The out-of-district program the student attended at the start of this school year closed unexpectedly, and we needed to find a placement for the student as the student's needs still warranted an out-of-district placement. The $65,850 is for the student's daily education and mental health services through the end of the school year.
Okay. This is a standard specialized contract. Any questions on this? We have a motion.
I move we approve the contract.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And a student services independent contractor agreement with the Challenge Day program.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Carrie Nierheim, who is our Director of Student Services.
Good evening, President Black, Superintendent Williams, Board of Trustees. I'm here with Shelley Ball. Thank you so much for being here. We are excited to bring to you the prospect of having Challenge Day at the high school. Challenge Day is an experiential program for students that builds a culture of empathy, which we feel we could continue this on. We would be using ACT funds that are already earmarked in the LCAT for this year. And Shelley has actually participated in a Challenge Day, so if you have any questions... year, and Shelley has actually participated in a Challenge Day, so if you have any questions about it, but we would be offering this to all of our sophomores, and then if we could extend it to the following year, just for the sophomores, then our juniors could act as volunteers to help with the small group work, so it could just continue on.
I'll just say, my son graduated from Albany High School 10 years ago, and he participated in Challenge Day and said it was amazing, it was awesome. So I think it's a great program.
He agreed, it is a great program. So what do we need here? A motion to approve?
Yes, we do.
What am I moving? That we approve the agreement between AUSD and the Challenge Day program, so, so moved.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, all we need is a.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to table the remaining items.
So moved.
Do we have a second on that?
I second that.
All in favor of tabling all the items under four, superintendent, and review and action, say aye.
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 And that brings us to agenda items, matters introduced by the Board.
Now, make it really fast. Re-agendize Board Bylaw 9320 meetings and notices. Re-agendize Board Governance Handbook, Annual Reorganization of the Board. Re-agendize Self-Evaluation Evaluation Instrument. Add Review and Action Mission and Structure of the Budget Advisory Committee, and continue the review and action budget reduction plan from the superintendent.
Anything else? Okay, then we're adjourned. One minute early.
All right, right on time. Excellent. It's only an hour. We're on time in some time zones.